So when will we be back at City Hall?
You know, I think it'll depend. So the governor's order has been extended through September, through, I think, September 4th, and she still has limitations on how many people can be together in an inside space. So we'll, we'll kind of take her lead on how many she allows to be inside in the same room.
That's for meeting purposes only, correct?
Yes, yep, that's for meeting. All right, I think we have almost everyone. Who am I missing here? Commissioner Lanier, is she on? Let me see. Coffee? Good morning, Commissioner Asasi and Commissioner Jones. Oh, there she is. Good morning.
My name was on down there. Sorry about that.
No, that's okay. That's okay. I'm gonna, I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. So for folks who are watching, this is a special meeting that the City Commission called to consider two items. And the reason that we called this is to make sure that we could get these items discussed, voted on before 4:00 PM today because we have a deadline, just in order to move forward for the November election. So I'm gonna call this to order, this meeting to order, this special meeting to order, and I'll ask our city clerk to take roll call.
Yes, Commissioner Repart.
Here.
Commissioner O'Connor. Commissioner Asasi.
Present.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Lanier.
How's it?
Commissioner Moody.
Present.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes. All right, so we will not move to public comments, so.
Mayor, Mayor, may I offer one other comment before we begin for the public? As you rightly indicated, this is a special call meeting, but we will have our regular call meeting at 10:30 for those that are watching.
Thank you, City Manager. That's a good, good thing to remind folks who are watching or calling in. So we'll open up this, this meeting with a public comment period. So this is public comment on action items. So we have two action items before us today, two resolutions on proposals for charter amendments. And so I will open it up for public comment. If you are watching and you want to provide public comment, you can call 311 and just hit the number one. City Clerk, anything else?
Um, I think that's it. And I think we already have three people in the queue, so.
Okay, all right. Well, we'll start with public comment commissioners, and then we'll move to the, to the two resolutions before us. So let's go ahead and hear from the first person in the queue.
Good morning, caller. You're on with the City Commission. You have three minutes. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your time starts now.
Okay, my name is Olga Vanderly, and I live in Hudsonville, Michigan, but I've been a resident most of the time of Grand Rapids. I'm actually here to talk about advocating for the homeless. Is this the time to do that?
That is not, caller. We have two items which we're speaking on.
Okay, I was told to call this number at 10 o'clock so that I could do that. So how do I do that? Because I know that is on the agenda.
On the, on the regular City Commission agenda, you'll call back this evening when we have public comment.
Oh, okay. So that wasn't explained to me. So I'm sorry that I called in, and I will do that this evening.
I apologize for the confusion, caller. Thank you.
All right, and, and I'll, go ahead, Daniel.
Sorry.
Nope, that's okay.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. You have three minutes. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your time starts now.
Hi, this is Bonnie Burke. I'm with Empower the Citizens, I'm with Empower the Citizens, and I would like to lend my support to both of these proposals going on the ballot. I also would like to say that the voting from to even years should be done by resolution as required by the State of Michigan. And I think that because we went out and over the past year plus and over 10,000, 10,000 signatures door to door. Okay, I, I'm halfway, could we start again, please? I'm halfway through.
You have three minutes. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. This is Bonnie Burke from Empower the Citizens. I appreciate you're looking at our ballot proposals today, and I urge you to send the proposals, the ballot language to the State Attorney General. It was at great cost and effort and expense during the time even of the pandemic that we had to get over 7,000 signatures. So I urge you to do this for the people even of the pandemic. So we need, we need you to do this because the citizens are, are wanting you to do this, and we want you to be able to let the citizens be the boss. It should go on the ballot, and we urge you to do this. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Mayor, would you like to speak? I can pause the queue.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that anyone who is interested in speaking that they're really clear that we're allowing public comment on the two items that we're going to be considering today, and they are both related to charter amendments. So any other topic that we're discussing later on our agenda, public comment for those are this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Here comes the next caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Yes, my name is Rena Baker, and I have been a resident of the city of Grand Rapids for the past 48 years on the West Side. I am calling also for Empower the Citizens to support the election of city official in November of even years. And the two major benefits of this change will be then overall the voter turnout will increase dramatically up to four times as many people vote in even year, and even more so for the minorities. As we provided you the research, it shows that black minority, the voter turnout will increase up to eight times in even year, and for Hispanic minorities even more than so, 13 to 20 times as many more Hispanics vote in even year. So there will be a much higher representation of all people in Grand Rapids in the election of our city officials. And the other benefit is the saving of money, as even the research from your own test force, appointed test force show that there will be quite a saving over $500,000 per election cycle if we went to even year election for our city officials. So thank you for placing this important ballot proposal on the November election. Thank you very much.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Yes, I'm calling from Grand Rapids, Michigan, 4907 area code. And one of the things I'd like to state is that if we were able to keep the voting as it is when it comes to our local elections, one of the good things is it's more candidate orientated. It doesn't get so much into people voting on which party that they're dedicated to. It gives them more time to have to really study each candidate, and our local candidates won't be mixed up with all of the national and state elections. And I believe we got some great representation for the city of Grand Rapids on the City Commission and a lot of the local levels. So I support keeping things the way they are. Thank you.
Thank you, caller.
Daniel, did we forget the name of that caller?
Uh, no, I don't believe the gentleman gave his name.
I know the voice.
Okay, there are no more callers in the queue, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Daniel. All right, we'll close that opportunity for public comment, and that'll take us to our two City Commission resolutions to be considered today. We'll start with the first one, a resolution on proposed citizen initiative, it's citizen-initiated city charter amendment, and this would be moving elections from odd to even year election. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
All right, moved and supported. I think we'll start by allowing Mr. Strom from our attorney's office to just provide some background on this, and then, and then we can ask any questions, and then I'll ask our city clerk to call for the vote. Mr. Strom, you want to give us a little background on this first item?
Sure, thank you. And we provided some legal analysis on this and a memorandum. Essentially, we looked at the Home Rule Cities Act and following the process provided within the Home Rule Cities Act for citizen-initiative ballot proposals to amend the charter. When there's 5% of the registered voters that sign initiative petitions, the next step is to approve the ballot language and work together with the county clerk to have that language on the ballot for the next general election, which in this case is November 3rd. There may be some internal steps that we have to take if this ballot proposal passes in the future. I think that's what one of the callers was referencing, but at this step, we're really looking at the ballot language and the notice that we'll provide out to the public to help give accurate information. And so that's been included in the form of the resolution. This will allow Joel, our city clerk, to go about fulfilling his duties and advancing this forward through the next step of the process.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Strom, I, maybe if you could also speak to some, provide some clarity. I know when this idea first came up, and even through the task force, it was understood by this body and a number of folks in the community that it could only be done by a City Commission resolution and not a charter amendment. Can you speak to that?
Sure. Well, this was originally looked at under our city charter existing language for initiative proposals, and that is a different process than the Home Rule Cities Act, citizen-initiated charter amendment process. And so by amending the city charter, we do have to bring this to the voters and allow them to vote on it. We have been working informally with the Attorney General's Office, and we will now formally send this on for their input as well. But I think there was a little bit of discrepancy on the first kind of thought about process and how this actually came forward to the commission this time around. And so that's why we have to bring this to the voters, put it on the ballot, and then we'll determine the next steps depending on what the vote is in November.
Okay, great, thanks. Commissioners, any questions or comments for Phil or for our city clerk or even our city attorney who's with us this morning?
Yeah, I have one, Madam Mayor. I wanted, if Mr. Strong could do me the honor of going back over what the AG's statements were in reference to this.
So again, it's, it's been informal. We've been working with George Elworth and talking to him about this, and he pointed out several other municipalities across the state who have had similar initiatives come, come in to their municipalities, and they were required likewise to put it on the ballot as we are here in this case. And so he will review with his staff the, all the documents now that we are able to put it in their hands. They'll look at the petitions and everything, and they'll give us a more formal opinion prior to November, which will help us educate the voters. But the, the Attorney General's Office cannot prevent this from going on the ballot. That was something that they were helpful in helping us understand based on the amount of signatures that were received and the way that this was prepared. We have to bring it to the voters.
Thank you, because that was my next question, and you answered it about the AG not being able to prevent it from going on the ballot.
Thanks. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? All right, I'll ask our city clerk to call the vote.
Commissioner Repart.
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier. Commissioner Lanier, I didn't hear you, sorry.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor. I didn't hear you, Commissioner O'Connor, sorry. Commissioner Moody.
Yes.
Commissioner Asasi.
Yes.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes.
Just, just as a reminder, this is a standalone meeting, so these will not be going to consent tonight. Just reminder.
Yep, thank you, Joel. All right, Commissioners, next item is a resol, it's a, technically would be proposal two, a resolution on a proposed citizen-initiated city charter amendment that would eliminate the provision allowing candidates to be elected to city office gaining a certain percentage of votes in the August primary. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Okay, moved and supported. Mr. Strom, you want to tell us about this one as well?
Sure, I think there's less history on this one in regards to any previous advice or, or thoughts around it, but this would essentially require general elections as opposed to a candidate winning outright at a primary. And again, this follows the charter amendment process from the Home Rule Cities Act. There is enabling law that allows municipalities to provide certain procedures for their elections. Previously, we had allowed this provision for candidates to win at the primary if they received a certain number of votes. And the ballot initiatives that we received would suggest that the citizens would like to vote on whether or not they should have a election as opposed to candidates winning at the primary with a certain number of votes. So we've drafted the language for a resolution, and again, by approving this, this would allow Mr. Hondor to work with the city clerk's office to get this on the ballot for the November 3rd election.
Right, thank you. Commissioners, any questions or comments about this item? Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to speak in general about both of these. I want to begin by recognizing the work of Empower the Citizens and their efforts to, to get the signatures necessary to have this forwarded to the ballot. I just want to publicly state my, my very real concern about all of this, and it really has to do with the unintended consequences that are just probably the biggest question mark in terms of the potential negative impact, if any, that it could have on our community. And also, I think, again, I can recognize the work put in by Empower the Citizens, and yet disappointed in what I see as a lack of, of representation in terms of their makeup, consisting of residents and other individuals of color. That last I checked, we have several in our city population, both African-American, Latinx, and there was a lack of individuals of diverse ethnic backgrounds who were part of this effort. And again, my, my greatest concern is representation ultimately on this body and recognizing that someone who is very much ran a campaign and been part of that process and knowing everything it takes, the real, the very real concern of being able to afford to be on the ballot in the future as a candidate simply because of the, the, the rather significant of, or the, the rather crowded ballots that are, that are at play in even years. And I think one of the callers earlier had indicated really the lack of an opportunity to better understand who's running for what and not perhaps putting them in a certain bucket based on, based on party. That's one of the benefits, I think many of us would agree, of being part of this commission is the fact that it's nonpartisan. And so I just want to publicly state my very real concern about the unintended consequences and the potential of having a city commission that consists of individuals who have the financial wherewithal to run a rather robust campaign, thus perhaps leaving out those who don't. And that is my, my greatest concern as you look forward with this, with these, these items for the ballot.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner, for sharing that. And I, you know, I think it's, it's a, it's a good distinction to make that we recognize and respect the process of getting signatures to put something through petition on, on the ballot. And if we vote yes to do that, that doesn't necessarily mean that we agree with the, with what's being proposed. And so every single one of us will have the opportunity to, to very publicly share our opinion about whether we plan to vote yes or no, and, and why we would be supportive or opposed to both of these items. So thank you for saying that, because I do think sometimes people think if we vote yes on placing it on the ballot, that somehow we're supportive of what's being recommended, and that is not always the case. So, thank you. Commissioner O'Connor? Oh, Commissioner, we can't hear you. I still can't hear you. No.
Hello?
Okay, there you go.
I just want to say, thank both you, Mayor, and Commissioner Jones, for your comments, and I support and echo what, what you said. And, you know, just because we're, this group went out and got the signatures required, I respect the process of citizen-initiated ballot proposals, and, you know, we'll happily vote yes to put this on the ballot for the folks in Grand Rapids to, to make a decision. But just because we do that doesn't mean we necessarily support the, you know, the intended outcomes of these. And I have very real concerns about both the increased partisan, partisanization of, of our elections by moving them to even years, as well as, you know, the increased cost as a result of both of these proposals for candidates, which I think does have some, to Commissioner Jones's point, some negative unintended consequences, making it more difficult for people to have an opportunity to, to run for office and require them to raise a significant amount more money. We've seen local elections become more costly, and I think this will only further exacerbate the, the, the cost of people actually trying to, to be part of their local government. And so, yeah, I'm looking forward to, to, you know, seeing how this plays out.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Asasi?
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's important to note that and have this conversation about this important topic. I don't always agree with Commissioner O'Connor, but I, I agree with everything that he just said. And I think that's important to know that this is not about, this is about making sure that people are educated and what Commissioner Jones says on the unintended consequences. I think just recently, I have even more strong concerns about the partisan nature that our elections could take on the proposed proposal one, not proposed, but what will, will be on the ballot, since we've just voted in the affirmative. That is a real concern. I think as we are in this moment discussing systemic racism across all of our systems in municipal government and in our society, we need to be mindful. And I feel that even some of the language of, you know, we just need to get the turnout. We just need to make, you know, why aren't, you know, one of the callers said, you know, more black and Latinx individuals vote? I think the issues are deeper than that. Why don't people vote? There has been a system of oppression in this country that has often made people feel like their vote doesn't matter. And I would hate to take that away from this local elected body, because I think it truly does matter, and we've seen that in this age of COVID and our economic recovery. So I also voted yes and will vote yes, and I think it's important for people to make sure they understand all of these nuances, as well as recognizing the statewide efforts of proposal two and three. And we know that our city clerk and the, and the entire department worked very hard in our last election last week, and we've seen an increase in people voting absentee. And so I think we also have other methods that are moving this work forward to hopefully engage more, more neighbors in, in their civic opportunity of voting in local elections. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, any other comments before I ask this, Commissioner Repart?
Yeah, just real quick, Mayor, I, I got a chance to go back and, and read the task force report that came out. And so just want to acknowledge that those individuals gave their time to explore these things. And, you know, these are two isolated things that we're voting on today, but there's an interplay between, they looked at several different other election adjustments that we could make. And you make them, make an adjustment to one of them, and then it does affect other things. And so I think that hearing these in isolation, I agree with everybody that it needs to go on the ballot, but they do affect other things if we vote for these. And I, and I appreciate the work of that task force to kind of say, if we did this, then this happens. And, you know, I think that it, we should make, make, make people aware of that report too, so they can go back and see the good work that that team did.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, any other comments before I ask the city clerk to call the question? Commissioner Lanier?
Mayor, I, I'm having some technical difficulties. I can't see anyone but Joel, so I don't know if you, you can see me or hear me, but I'll just try and be really brief. I am in the same position as my colleagues who have spoken this morning regarding the two ballot questions that we've been asked to vote on. And as you mentioned, Mayor, when we are voting in favor of putting something on the ballot, it does not necessarily indicate our support for the actual items that are being put on the ballot. I am very much in favor of, of if citizens have put forth the effort of getting signatures and petitions signed, that we should do our due diligence to make it available for the general public to weigh in. And so I'm, I'm going to vote yes, so that the public can have an opportunity to give their opinion about the, the charter amendments that are being offered. I will also add, I think there have been some really good comments about partisanship and the costs that is tied to running for office. I think another element that I'd like to layer in is the point of privilege that all of them have serving on the commission. Most of us are either business owners with very flexible schedules that we're able to dictate, or executives of nonprofits where, again, because of the position that we hold, we have a little bit more flexibility. And, and I think with this being a part-time position that doesn't necessarily pay the wage of the amount of work that goes into it if you're doing it well, it is, you know, already restrictive of who can run for office, because it there, it's limited to how much time and flexibility people may have. And I think to add on a few more layers that would cause people who may have interest in becoming a city elected official, the challenge of raising money, then you have, you, you're making the opportunity even less available for those who may have interest in serving the community. And so, you know, I'm looking forward to the educational opportunity to help people to understand, I think as one caller mentioned, the level of engagement that happens with citizens who are voting in odd year. And I'm also even interested in having conversations with other bodies about how do we move other nonpartisan local elections to odd year, because I think that it fits better to have those local elections kind of hyper-localize on, on one ballot so that people can be engaged and know exactly what it is that they're voting on and not kind of watered down on the back of a ballot when you have the governor at the top of the ticket or the president. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Moody?
Madam Mayor, I, um, thank you for this opportunity. I echoed some of the remarks of my colleagues. However, I'm somewhat at a little bit of a disadvantage because I've never had to run a campaign. So I don't necessarily understand all of the ins and outs as to what they've gone through. Been somewhat fortunate to be elected to the school board without running unopposed and running as a commissioner unopposed. So I understand the feelings. I do appreciate the committee for getting their petitions done and getting to a point to get this on the ballot. But I, I echo Commissioner Lanier in terms of the educational piece. One day, when I do run for the presidency of the United States, I may have an understanding of how to run a campaign. But I'm at a disadvantage, so I somewhat feel somewhat reluctant about this whole thing. But I feel the pains of those who have had to run and the monies they've had to spend out to get elected. So this is going to be interesting. I just wanted to make that clear and put that on the record.
Thanks, Commissioner. All right, with that, I think I'll have our city clerk call the question on this second proposal, and then we'll open it up for final comments. Go ahead.
Commissioner Lanier?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Isasi?
Yes.
Commissioner Repart?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes. It carries. All right, thank you, Commissioners. And now I'll turn to all of you for final comments before we adjourn this meeting and then move to Committee of the Whole. Any final comments? All right, I'll just close again by reminding folks that we supported these petition-led charter amendments, but want to be clear that that does not imply that those of us around this table encourage people to vote yes or no. We'll have the opportunity to share our opinion about that as we get ready to campaign, just like any campaign. There'll be a number of items on the November ballot. These will be two of them, and all of us around this table will be able to openly and publicly express some of the concerns that you all shared this morning, and then talk to groups in our community about the potential unintended consequences, as Commissioner Jones said. So any final comments before we adjourn? Commissioner Isasi, did you have your hand up?
Thank you, Mayor. I just a point of order for this evening. So this is a special meeting. We had public comment at the beginning, we voted. Are individuals able, if they've watched this morning or seen a news report, which often happens, are they able to call in in the general segment? I just, I think I just want people to know, like, when they should call in after they watched this morning's meeting, because I think sometimes that can be confusing, and we already saw it this morning. So could you just reiterate that, Joel? City Clerk?
Yep, so this evening, if someone wanted to comment on what happened at this meeting, this would be not items on the agenda, this would be in the final public comment period this evening.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, Commissioners, with that, I'll go ahead and adjourn. Why don't we just take a quick minute break, because I know Commissioner Lanier was going to sign off and then sign back on to try to address her technical difficulties. So why don't we come back together in just a minute? Okay? Everyone is ready to speak now?
I don't see Commissioner Lanier back on yet.
Okay, all right. So for those watching, we're just starting a little late. We had a special meeting this morning that we just finished up, and then we're giving one of our colleagues an opportunity to sign back in because of some technical difficulties.
I'm glad other people are having problems other than me.
Are you glad it's not you today, Commissioner?
Yes, I am. Ecstatic about that.
Commissioners, while we're getting everybody back online, just an update. I know I sent you an email last week indicating that we identified the issue that we're having. It has to do with our firewalls. We have a redundant firewall system, and it's cutting over and it's causing some loss in the process. We had hoped to make that fix on Friday, but ran into some challenges. So we're hoping by the end of this week that we'll have that fix in place. It's just so. The good news is we've identified the issue. The bad news is any technical issue is harder to solve than you initially imagined it might be.
All right.
Thank you for that update.
All right, looks like Commissioner Lanier is back. Hopefully she can see us. We can see you just fine and hear you fine. So it's good to see you back. We'll go ahead and get started then with our Committee of the Whole meeting. We have five action items and then two briefings. So we'll go ahead and start with our action items. The first item is a resolution recommending approval to the Michigan Liquor Control Amendment of multiple social district permit applications, and this is pursuant to Public Act 124 of 2020. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Support.
All right, moved and supported. Let's see, who wants to talk to us about this? Mr. Kenfield, is that you?
I can do that, yes. Good morning.
Great, thanks.
All right, Commissioners, this proposed resolution is very similar to one you considered and adopted on July 21st. So you'll probably recall that you designated two social districts, one downtown and one on Wealthy Street, and then approved an initial batch of recommended MLCC social district permits. So this is similar to that second item and would recommend approval of nine additional social district permits. I do want to let you know that we did explore the idea of delegating this process to the city manager, as you requested we do. And based on our reading of Public Act 124 and consultation with MLCC, we think it's important to continue with this process. But fortunately, this is a standard item and should be pretty easy to batch these going forward.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any questions? All right, I'll turn to our city clerk to call for the vote.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Isasi?
Yes.
Commissioner Repart?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, it carries. All right, next that will take us to a resolution approving a Brownfield Plan Amendment for three F properties for a project located at 470 Market Avenue. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Support.
All right, moved and supported. And we have our Director of Economic Development, Mr. Gracia, with us to talk about this. Also, Commissioner, remind you that we had a public hearing related to this project at our last city commission meeting.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Commissioners. This is a resolution approving that Brownfield Plan Amendment for the property located at 470 Market Avenue Southwest. Investment by the developer in the rehab of the building is estimated to be just over $26 million, with hard construction costs of just over $20 million. And the property contains is approximately 210,000 square feet. The project will include redevelopment, the vacant building, and 176 market-rate apartments. And as you recall, the recent housing needs assessments were calls for a demand of 1,467 new rental units in the 80% to 120% arremiting income. This would provide a good start to that 1,469 new rental unit demand, and developers applying for this 10-year Oprah exemption that will be a reimbursement of up to $5 million, just over $5 million. Happy to answer any other questions.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any questions? All right, seeing none, I'll ask our city clerk to call the vote.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Isasi?
Yes.
Commissioner Repart?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, it carries. All right, next is a resolution establishing an obsolete property rehabilitation district pursuant to PA 146 of 2003 F, same project located at 470 Market Southwest. Can I get a motion?
Move.
Support.
Right, moved and supported. Mr. Gracia, you want to explain this item and how this qualifies Oprah and why coupled together with the prior item?
Yeah, so the same project, it is, the property has been designated as an obsolete property and qualifies for this resolution. And so this public hearing was discussed on July 21st, and we are just bringing together this resolution to include this Oprah, to create this Oprah district, establish the Oprah district at 470 Market.
Great, thanks. Commissioners, any questions? All right, I'll turn to our city clerk to call the question.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Isasi?
Yes.
Commissioner Repart?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, it carries. All right, Commissioners, the next item is a companion with the resolution that we just passed, and this is a resolution approving a 10-year obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate pursuant to PA 146 of 2000 for the same project located at 470 Market Avenue Southwest. Can I get a motion? All right, moved and supported. Mr. Gracia, you want to tell us anything more about this?
No, this is just a follow-up resolution to the previous, like creating this 10-year Oprah certificate.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any questions? All right, I'll turn to our city clerk to call the vote.
Commissioner Isasi?
Yes.
Commissioner Repart?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, it carries. All right, that will take us to our fifth resolution.
Mayor, may I just add, just to, we do things so efficiently that we just heard the report about the need to increase housing supply, and I just want the public to be aware, these combined actions will lead to over 170 units of added housing supply at various housing affordability levels.
Great. Thank you for pointing that out. I think all of us appreciate seeing, especially during the period of time, seeing projects move forward, especially for housing, knowing that that's a significant need in our community. So thank you. So next, we'll go to the final resolution. This is a resolution approving a revised Brownfield Plan Amendment for HGR-1 LLC for the project that is located at 10 Ionie Avenue Northwest. Can I get a motion?
Move.
Support.
Moved and supported. Mr. Gracia, I think I'll turn to you for this one as well.
Yes, so this revised Brownfield Plan Amendment is to cover additional unexpected costs related to the project that to be included in the Brownfield Amendment totaling The revised Plan Amendment will facilitate the extension of the capture for additional Brownfield activities and for additional seven years. And it looks like the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority has already approved and recommended this plan at the June 24th meeting, and a public hearing was held before the commission on July 21st, 2020. Happy to answer any other questions related to the project.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any questions? All right, I'll turn to our city clerk to call for the vote.
Commissioner Repart?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Isasi?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, it carries. All right, thank you, everyone. That will take us through our action items, and we have two presentations. What I think I'll do with this is turn it over to our city manager to provide a little bit of background. And then we have, I knew that we'll turn it over to our police chief, Chief Payne, and he has some individuals with him this morning to assist with this presentation. So I'll just start it off by saying how much I appreciate all the work that has gone into creating the strategic plan that is being presented this morning. It was shared publicly just a couple days ago. I've been well aware of all of the community conversations, but also work here within the department and with a number of city staff to bring this forward. So just want to really express my appreciation for everyone that works hard to bring it forward so quickly. With that, I'll turn it to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for allowing us time this morning to give our public report of the progress on the Police Department's strategic plan. I'd like to begin with some opening remarks and just, first of all, acknowledge it has been a very challenging 2020 year so far with the multiple pandemics with COVID-19 and the many conversations around racial inequality, social justice, the demonstrations, and coupled with that, the rising crime that we experience in our community. I do want to thank the many officers, men and women in the department, who serve this community very faithfully, and many have worked during this challenging season, 24-hour shifts and long work weeks requiring shifts that go on for 10 to almost 15 days sometimes in a row without a break. And under this, we have another conversation about the need to improve leasing in our community and communities nationwide. And under this kind of pressure, those officers continue Under this kind of pressure, those officers continue to to serve this community proudly and uphold the standards of law enforcement in light of much of the professional scrutiny that's going on. And so I want to thank them, I want to thank the police chief for his leadership during this time. In light of all that, we've had recent conversations around, you know, Grand Rapids and similar to other communities around reducing funding, redirecting funding, defunding the police department, and I share with the commission that conversations like this must be taken very deliberately and strategically, and we cannot have a funding plan or take funding action without having a strategic plan. And I wanted the police department to begin that thoughtful deliberative process. They've been having this conversation for some time since Chief Payne's appointment, but the conversation had to be redirected in light of the things that have happened since May 30th, and so they've rapidly pivoted. I'm going to ask you, if you're not speaking at this time, if you could, please put your mics on mute and getting a little feedback. Thank you. So again, any discussions around this should be deliberate and thoughtful and lead toward the outcome of where our city is a place where it is a safe place and everyone feels safe at all times in every community in our city. And so I believe this strategic plan is a good step towards that. It builds on much of the work that has transpired in this community, and we cannot do it alone. The police and community are not mutually exclusive. The police needs the community, and the community also needs its police. And I recognize that it's past time for us to examine this, and I'm very pleased to be part of bringing this plan forward. Again, it takes in consideration all of the feedback over the many years or the many past five years from the multitude of studies. But at some point, we we have to not only look back, but begin to look forward. And this is a good inflection point that allows us not to look back at the past five years, what's been done, what's been the concern, or what has not been done, but talk about what are we going to get done over the next few months and the next three years? That's the look, that's the outlook of this plan. And so these conversations have been internalized by the police department. They've had some real candid and frank conversations with the man staff. The chief has talked to officers in the department. I've asked to make sure that people are aware and he's getting feedback. I've asked him to engage union leadership. They've been part of some of the conversations I've been in some of those meetings. This is this has been challenging to the to the psyche of the department. We've had to, we think very quickly and and ask us some real hard questions on how do we better ensure that there's trust in the community? How do we better ensure that people feel safe? How do we reduce the amount of violence that's in the community, particularly around gun violence? How do we make sure that everyone feels like the police department is supportive of positive steps of our community moving forward? How do I, how do we ensure that our police department feels supported by its community and its elected leaders? And we need to be able to build that a two-way bridge of trust. But more importantly, how do we ensure that there's better accountability, transparency, and oversight of the actions of the police department in doing so, particularly when there's situations that require use of force, make sure the police department use appropriate de-escalation services? So many of these questions and much more are addressed in the strategic plan that was released on Friday. What we'll try to do today is provide an overview for the public. And before I go into the formal presentation, I do again want to thank the police department. I also like to thank the fire department, the we took a public safety approach. There's elements of the plan that require joint efforts, particularly around the area of homeless response. And the fire department has also supported the effort by assisting in some of the strategy sessions and conversation. Want to thank them. It's been a real multi-departmental effort. I want to thank members of my executive team, certainly, again, the police department, their command staff, the chief's newly created advisory council has also lended voice to elements of the plan. We've had outstanding support from our performance management office, from Ms. Sutter. I want to thank her for her diligence and leadership, as well as you'll see some elements around transparency through innovation. And our customer service and innovation office has been very helpful in that. I also want to thank the members of the City Commission for your feedback, candid feedback, support, and patience in allowing us the time to put such a thoughtful plan together, as well as the community. And many of the venues that they have expressed their thoughts, whether it's moments of the past, or even the many meetings that the police chief has been part of personally, or even as we've gone through some of the demonstrations, all of that has has gone into this thoughtful approach. And finally, I also want to acknowledge Gary Peterson from Public Search Consulting, who has also added some perspective to our efforts in giving us a lens outside of the Grand Rapids community. So with that, can someone bring up the PowerPoint and advance it to slide number two, please? So this, for the remainder of this presentation, I think I'll turn it over to the chief shortly and have him take the wheel and provide some additional remarks. But he will, he and the staff will take us through the plan elements in detail. We'll talk a little bit about the timing. There's a lot in the plan. All of it cannot be done at once. We will have to begin to prioritize the things that are the most important and talk about our implementation. But today is about strategy. This is not a budget conversation. This is about strategy. What do we want our police department of the future and the present to look and feel like? We'll also give an update on many of the reform efforts that we talked about that the department was working on since June and those policy efforts and how that policy is transformed into a procedure and how that eventually affects a culture, as well as things that the department's doing to improve the composition and recruitment of this department, as well as those new positions that you recently approved for administrative personnel. As I mentioned earlier, our customer service innovation office has helped us with transparency and reporting, and we'll preview a little bit of the dashboard along with our performance management office, and then come back and ask, see what questions that you might have. Next slide. I won't spend a lot of time on this, but a picture is worth a thousand words, and I think it's pretty significant to look at the progress over the past five years that began with in 2015 with the 12-point plan. And you've seen the things that have been done in the past, and we've kind of sketched it on a timeline, but what you'll see, we've accelerated many of the reform efforts here recently since 2018. And so this is, this is like many other organizations, you don't get to where you are overnight. It is evolution. It is iteration. It is increasingly becoming better and continuously improving. And while there are certain elements of of the department, we know that need to continue to evolve, this is indicative of the kind of effort that we have done, and it's encouraging to me because I know that based on what we have done, we can do so much more. Next slide. As I mentioned earlier, this this policing is often is is made to look simple, but it is not. It is very complex. It's very complicated, and there are many, many different stakeholders who often have differing opinions and feedback on different approaches. And so it is it is multi-layered, it is diverse, but all of that is important, and that complexity is what we have taken in consideration to build upon the plan. And you see the multiple sources of inputs that have contributed to this, whether it is getting perspective from state and federal law, external experts, or listening to experts within our own police department, collaborating with staff, looking at the various boards and committees and councils that are that have been providing feedback over the years, and certainly listening to the voice of our community and in being aware of what's happening nationally, but also being mindful of the outcome, both on use of force as well as crime. And so what we've tried to do is take all of this various inputs and built it into something that is very thoughtful and intentional and balances that, but still maintains the integrity of the department and our ability to deliver a good policing or excellent policing services. And so with that, I am going to now turn it over to Chief Payne, who will provide further comments and will co-present with members of of his team. Chief Payne?
Thank you, City Manager Washington. And I also want to thank, there was many people involved in putting this plan together from the fire department, Ms. Sutter and her team, like man staff. So there's been a lot of work that's put in, been put into this. So thank you, everyone. For the past several months, cities across the U.S. have been challenged with addressing their community grief, rage, and frustration. From the murders of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, and others, to the civil unrest in many communities or many cities, our nation finds itself at a pivotal point in history, as do we in Grand Rapids. From the very beginning of law enforcement existence, it has been understood that the community should determine how to advise police. I wholeheartedly believe this and am committed to making sure this is the Grand Rapids way. And in response to our community members who have exercised their right to speak up about justice, reform, and change, I'm here to say, as I have for several months, I hear you. But I know it's not enough to say I hear you. Action always speaks louder than words. I'm here today to present to you our police department's strategic operational plan for 2021 to 2023. But before we can talk about what's next for our police department and how we can continue to work together to move forward as a community, we must acknowledge and understand where we have been and where we are today. Law enforcement as a profession has a long history of service and sacrifice, but it's not without mistakes and shortcomings, including playing significant role in systemic racism. In our many listening sessions over the past several years, I have heard from members of our community, particularly people of color, that they have felt overpoliced, harassed, and afraid. As a member of our police department for more than 30 years, hearing these personal stories have has a profound impact on me, both professionally and personally. I want to assure the community that those outcomes would never be intent on our department. They were, they were the results of outdated tactics and ineffective deployment strategies. It has been said during recent City Commission meetings that police response to violent crime is to throw more cops out. Yes, that has been our response. In fact, this historically has been the response of police departments across the country. When police departments see a significant increase in violent crime, the traditional response has been to send in more officers, specialty teams to engage with aggressive enforcement. But where has this gotten us? If we send in additional officers and tell our officers to go stop crime, they will use the tactics that have proven to work. They will make traffic stops, engage residents, and identify and arrest people who have committed crimes. Oftentimes, we are able to impact crime, but do we also impact innocent people? As we cast a wide net, who else gets gets caught up in it? We know that some community members have been stopped or feel like they have been targeted, and we acknowledge that there is a better way to police. We believe in constitutional policing. We know you don't want a police department that pulls over a single mother multiple times for a taillight out, or a father driving to work which who has to choose between groceries for his family and getting licensed, get his license renewed. As a police officer, I know a taillight that is out, driving without a valid license are clear violations of the law. But as police chief, I acknowledge these low-level offenses are not a department priority. And I've, I have heard from the community members that they want us to instead focus our attention on reducing violent crime and building trust. So our challenge in the aftermath of the murder of George Floyd and others, and during a public health pandemic, is to reimagine how we police our community. I have taken in and thought long and hard about the concern or the comments and concerns I have heard from the community. I have reviewed the recommendations from the many studies on how we police. Before I talk about our draft strategic plan, I want you to know that as part of our planning process, we revised our department's vision, mission, and values. Everything in this plan flows from my vision for the department, which acknowledges from the outset that we are in this together. My vision is that in partnership with our community, we will become the safest mid-sized city and the most trusted police department in the United States. That means in partnership with our community, we will no longer police our community how we think it should be, whether we will police our community how it has told us it wants to be. Our mission is to protect life and property, prevent crime, and ensure all people feel safe, are safe, and are safe at all times throughout our community. We have developed a plan that will change how policing is done in Grand Rapids. Our new way of policing will foster a cultural service, one of our stated values. We also acknowledge the importance of equity in our stated values. By way, I will acknowledge right now that historically segments of our community, including people of color, low-income residents, and others, have been disproportionately impacted by policing practice and criminal justice and the criminal justice system. As a leader of the department now, I acknowledge this, and I want to say to community members who have been negatively impacted or treated unfairly by the police, that includes me, I am sorry. I want you to know we are committed to providing fair and just police service for all individuals with integrity, another value, and when we make mistakes, we will take responsibility for our actions and be transparent. Our 2021 to 2023 operational plan identified three primary goals: safety, improve community safety, innovation, embrace innovation, and engagement, engage our community. It is my sincere hope that by implementing the strategies and action steps laid out in this plan, we will make strides for becoming the safest mid-sized city and the most trusted police department in the country. The primary concept within the safety goal is transitioning from a community policing model to a neighborhood-based policing model. Community policing by its very nature means policing the entire community. We are a large and diverse city in many ways, but may work within one neighborhood, may not be the policing style that works in another another neighborhood. Neighborhood-based policing involves specific changes in our systems to ensure every patrol officer is a community policing specialist. Officers are accountable for their beat to prevent crime and improve quality of life by collaborating collaborating with residents and community stakeholders to address neighborhood-specific crime, issues, and other concerns. Innovation involves utilizing existing and new partnerships and technology to improve services that have traditionally been provided by the police. We will work to create multidisciplinary teams to provide service to and work with at-risk populations, such as those experienced mental illness or homelessness. We will be part of a systematic response to the issues that plague our community and will work collaboratively with stakeholders for long-term solutions, not just short-term fixes. Finally, we will expand the concept of community engagement by working with other city departments, officials, community leaders, advocacy groups, and our residents. We will be more effective, transparent, accountable, and approachable as we work to improve your confidence in us and build trust with all segments of the community. Transitioning to a policing model that requires us to engage and collaborate with community members, advocacy groups, other city departments, and civilian service providers will decrease situations that might require that might require a police presence. I feel strongly that our plan provides our personnel the necessary framework to nurture a culture of service, not only for today, but for generations to come. This transition will be successful only if we come together as a community, listen to one another, and work together. As we continue to develop this plan and implement it, we will engage our community in an ongoing dialogue with the goal of improving service we provide. And Ms. Sutter, if you could start the slide? Thank you. So I want to walk through some of the process for drafting the plan. Our process was very inclusive of city personnel, national experts, and input from the community over the past several years. Office of Performance Management, the Fire Department. Office of Performance Management, the Fire Department, weekly meetings with the chief, with the city manager and executive team, and as mentioned, inclusion of outside experts. That's just some examples of what who helped develop this plan, more importantly, informed by the community and their feedback. Next slide, please. We hear you. As mentioned before, below you'll see thirty-two feedback items that are organized into four different categories. Some of them are Support Youth Workforce Development Program and Focus on Positive Interactions from the GR Task Ask Community from 2017. Police are understaffed, partner with social workers, lighten up the load of police officers. Police Chief Recruiting Search, Engage Integrity and Empathy was one of the major components in that search. These are just some of the examples we have that went into developing this plan. Next slide, please. Our Values. I'll hit on Service. Every new recruit, myself included, will state, "I want to work with people and serve the community." This has been reinforced, this must be reinforced and maintained throughout an officer's career. Equity must be woven into the fabric of every part of our organization: recruitment, hiring, engagement, enforcement, policies, training, and budget, just to name a few. Equity must be a part and understood that it is a part of our organization. Next is Integrity. We must hold ourselves to the highest ethical standards. Trust will develop if we are doing the right thing at the right time for the right reason. Leadership of the department will also be defined by the same principles. Accountability through transparency will not only take responsibility for our actions, but will always ensure others are held accountable as well. Our Vision. From our vision statement, it is important to note that we are experiencing an increase in violence through our community. That is not acceptable. It is vital that the community and GRPD work together to end this cycle of violence. Building trust is a major component in working with community. We need to continue to work on mutual respect and mutual trust between the community and GRPD. I recognize having the safest mid-sized city and the most trusted police department is a bold statement. I am convinced by working with every stakeholder, community, GRPD, city leadership, we can accomplish this, the vision, and much more. Finally, our mission statement cannot be more straightforward. Our job is to protect life and property and prevent crime, and ensure all people feel safe and are safe all the times throughout our community. Now I'd like to turn it over to Deputy Chief Kittle to explain in more detail my plan for the department moving forward.
Thank you, Chief. Our plan is broken down by priorities, objectives, strategies, and action steps. Priorities are our main buckets, if you will, to which we organize our work, while outcomes describe what we hope to accomplish within each of the priorities. Objectives identify where we will focus our efforts under each of the higher-level priorities. Strategies identify how we will achieve our objectives and desired outcomes. Our action steps are the tasks required to execute the strategy, while metrics are how we will measure how well we are achieving our objectives and those desired outcomes. This presentation will primarily stay at the strategy level in the instance of time, but will note some of the action steps as we discuss each objective for areas that may require more explanation. We have identified three interwoven priorities to drive our department for the next three years. Those priorities are safety, innovation, and engagement. Our approach to each of these priorities will be informed by best practices, dialogue with our community, and a commitment to continuous evaluation and improvement. Our objectives and strategies are formed by previous studies and engagement with the community over the past several years. Our first priority is safety, and our desired outcome is to provide professional neighborhood policing services to prevent crime, enhance trust, and ensure safety for all. Our first objective is to be a positive presence in our neighborhoods, respond to police calls for service, and engage collaborative problem-solving initiatives with our community. Strategy one under this objective is to transition to neighborhood-based policing by making every patrol officer a community policing specialist, who will focus on crime prevention, improve the quality of life for our community members, and build trust. Our first task will be to examine our current service area and beat configuration to determine if it is the most appropriate structure for our new neighborhood-based policing philosophy. In our current beat structure, this strategy increases our community policing specialists from fifteen, covering only six days per week and only partial times of the day, to one hundred and thirty-two community policing specialists working twenty-four-seven. Residents and businesses will know who their beat officers are, and officers' primary objective will be successful outcomes and solutions through problem solving. Our second strategy, to increase officers' unallocated time so they can actively engage in the neighborhood, is key to the success of Strategy One. This will involve a significant task of evaluating our call management protocols to ensure officers are only sent to calls that require sworn personnel. Additionally, to the extent possible, we'll ensure via our computer-aided dispatch system that beat officers handle all non-emergency calls for service in their area for familiarity and accountability purposes. Strategy Three is to maximize the use of data to provide timely and accurate intelligence. This will ensure analysts are presenting beat-level intelligence and crime data to beat officers regularly. Additionally, it will ensure beat officers are working on identified problems that are complaints-driven. Our second objective under Safety is to create a Crime Reduction Team. This team will have two primary objectives. The first is to assist beat officers in concentrated areas of criminal activity. This is called hotspot policing, and you'll note that our plan calls for beat officers to communicate with their neighborhoods prior to the deployment of proactive strategies that may increase police presence. The intent of this type of policing is not to throw a large net over an area, but to strategically address a specific problem. The team's second objective will be based on investigative data to arrest criminal offenders. Objective Three is to engage with the Offices of Oversight and Public Accountability and community stakeholders to pursue data-driven, evidence-based strategies that address root causes of police-related emergencies. Our first strategy here is to identify funding for a collaborative approach that integrates community leaders and past offenders in violence reduction strategies, such as Cure Violence or Similar Program. Although these types of programs are not designed to be operated by police departments, we'll take the initiative to coordinate implementation of such programs to address the violence in our community. Strategy Two is about partnering with a Safe Task Force to identify and implement police-related recommendations from their report. Our second priority is innovation, where we will leverage partnerships and technology to improve services, decrease crime, and increase efficiency. Objective One is to explore alternative responses to certain calls for service. Our first strategy is to expand the homeless outreach team that was formed a few months ago. We're in the process of increasing the number of police officers assigned to ensure seven-day coverage, and along with the Fire Department, are in discussions to integrate permanent behavioral health professionals into the team. We will use Strategy One as a model for our second strategy, which is to develop and pilot a mental and behavioral health team that can corespond to mental health, non-violent substance use, and other related calls for service. This will involve identifying the necessary components of the team and determining the appropriate types of calls they will respond to. Strategy Three is a similar concept, and calls for developing a community assistance team made up of non-sworn personnel who can assist and work with beat officers to address neighborhood concerns that are noncriminal and more in line with quality of life issues. Examples might include neighbor issues, noise complaints, similar type of calls where police officers may not be required. Finally, we will collaborate with Mobile GR to transition parking enforcement to non-sworn city employees outside the police department, thereby increasing the time officers have to deal with more serious offenses and engaging in the neighborhoods. Our second objective under Innovation is to partner with the Kent County Prosecutor's Office to coordinate victim advocacy and restorative justice programs. Our newly hired victim advocate is well-positioned to ensure we play a vital role in beat support Objective Three is to leverage technological opportunities to decrease crime and increase efficiency while ensuring objective and constitutional use and accountability. We will continue to evaluate the constitutional use of unmanned aerial systems as first responder, a program where UASs are deployed to provide intelligence to responding officers. In a model program, the UAS was able to cancel responding officers nearly twenty-five percent of its deployments, increasing the efficiency of the department. With community support, we will revisit the effectiveness of gunfire detection technology as we are currently experiencing a significant increase in gunfire and violence across our city. A real-time crime center consolidates technology and data to give officers instant information to improve their response to incidents as well as guide resource deployment. Community engagement and education would be first steps prior to implementation of any of these technological enhancements that would allow us to respond to crime events more efficiently, more deliberately, with improved operational intelligence, and with a more proactive emphasis on officer, citizen, and community safety. Our third priority of engagement will be community trust and mutual understanding by enhancing community engagement strategies within the framework of our neighborhood-based policing. Objective One is simply to align our engagement with our neighborhood-based policing philosophy by taking it to the neighborhood level. For the first strategy, we will enhance communication with residents, businesses, and visitors, utilizing multiple mediums for two-way communication, including regularly-scheduled neighborhood meetings and events, social and traditional media, and websites or apps. In Strategy Two, we will better educate the community and city leadership on police operations. We'll reimagine the citizen and youth police academies while collaborating with community stakeholders on educational videos and other opportunities. For Strategy Three, we'll ensure equitable engagement representation throughout the city by creating equity-centered training for community engagement while mapping and publishing our engagement efforts. In Objective Two, we will partner and collaborate with the Offices of Oversight and Public Accountability and Equity and Engagement, as well as with community stakeholders, to increase community trust through transparency and accountability while elevating the chief's, I'm sorry, the community's voice in police operations. Our first strategy, to provide accurate and timely data to the city's police metrics dashboard, is already in place and will be discussed in more detail at the end of this presentation. Strategy Two will hold commanders accountable to utilize data regarding community sentiment or community surveys to constantly evaluate and improve police services while ensuring equity. Strategy Three will add a formal advisory structure to the Police Chief's advisory team, providing input on items such as budget, policy, performance metrics, and outcomes. The initial members of this team have already met several times and provided feedback on this strategic plan. In Strategy Four, we will reimagine the Police Chief's Youth Advisory Board by partnering with local schools and make it more meaningful to both our city youth as well as the police The focus of Objective Three is to attract, hire, and retain high-performing employees who embrace a guardian mentality and our new neighborhood-based policing philosophy. In Strategy One, we will continue to reimagine recruiting strategies with the goal of ensuring the demographics of the departmental staff is representative of the community's demographics. We've already initiated a diverse committee of department members to provide guidance to the recruitment methods, and will collaborate with organizations such as the NAACP, Hispanic Center, Urban League, and other local organizations on recruiting strategies. In Strategy Two, we will hold our beat officers accountable for recruiting at the neighborhood level as part of our existing Grow Your Own strategy. Strategy Three, we will foster a guardian culture and ensure that impartial policing philosophy is valued throughout our organization. We will provide training that educates sworn personnel in the importance of a guardian mindset while preparing them to be warriors only when absolutely necessary. Please remember that this is still a draft plan, and we look forward to further input. We will receive online feedback on our plan from now through August twenty-five. A link is available on our website. Additionally, we are working to develop other engaging opportunities for the community to provide feedback prior to September twenty-nine, when we will formally present the plan to City Commission. We intend to provide quarterly progress reports to Commission through 2021 and expect to have addressed all of our objectives by June thirty, 2023. I will now turn it over to Deputy Chief Reifenberg, who will discuss recent police reform updates to include policy changes and degree of practice.
Thank you, Deputy Chief Kittle. On June tenth, City Manager Washington directed the Police Department to work on improving or implementing seven specific items related to the use of force and officer identification within sixty days. Following policy changes have been drafted and are scheduled to be published in our manual procedures as soon as training can be concluded for department staff. This is a priority and should be completed in the coming weeks. Number one, improve use-of-force policy by banning chokeholds. Our use-of-force policy, MLP nine-dash-one, neck restraints, which are physical maneuvers that restrict an individual's ability to breathe or restrict blood flow to the head, are prohibited unless the officer is in a situation where deadly force would be offered. Number two, improve our policy requiring officers to deescalate situations where possible by communicating with the subject, maintaining distance, and otherwise eliminating the need to use force. Again, in the use-of-force policy nine-dash-one, when possible, officers shall attempt to gain control by means of verbal directives or commands. Effective communication skills may prevent many physical complications from escalating. However, if verbal directives or commands are ineffective or not feasible given the circumstances of the situation, the officer must be prepared to escalate to control methods that involve the use of physical force. If force is justified, the officer must decide which techniques or authorized equipment will bring the situation under control. Number three, requiring officers to give verbal warning in all situations whenever possible before using deadly force. Again, in the use-of-force policy nine-dash-one, whenever reasonably possible, officers shall provide verbal directives before deadly force is used. Number four, requiring officers to exhaust all other reasonable alternatives, including non-force and less lethal force options, before resorting to deadly force. MLP nine-dash-one use-force already requires the exhaustion of alternatives prior to the use of deadly force. Number five was improving our policy by requiring officers to intervene and stop excessive force used by other officers or report these incidents immediately to a supervisor. This was added to the use-of-force policy. Duty to intervene arises when an officer observes or has reason to know that another officer is using force that is clearly unreasonable, and the officer has the opportunity and means to stop the harm or prevent the harm from occurring. Officers have a duty to intervene regardless of the other law enforcement officers' rank, seniority, or agency. Retaliation against any employee who intervenes, reports, or participates in an investigation that commences pursuant to this policy is strictly prohibited. All officer interventions shall be reported to a supervisor and forwarded to the Internal Affairs Department for investigation. Number six, updating the policy on banning officers from shooting at moving vehicles. GRPD had previously banned this practice. It's covered in our firearm arms policy, MLP nine-dash-two. Officers may only discharge a firearm at a moving vehicle or its occupants when the officer reasonably believes there are no other means available to avert the threat of death or serious bodily injury to the officer or others. Number seven, make sure all uniformed officers have names on all uniforms while in public to include events involving civil unrest. It's covered in MLP twelve-dash-one, the dress code. Department dress code currently, code policy currently addresses the issue. Additional changes to policy, no-knock search warrants were banned. MLP two-dash-one, immediate entry search warrants or no-knock are prohibited. Officers are required to announce their authority and purpose. Additionally, the department will not assist or participate in immediate entry search warrant execution with another law enforcement agency. Now going to go into the police recruiting strategies and the update from our community engagement, which has been focused on recruiting a diverse workforce that reflects the community in which we serve. The community engagement unit was established in two thousand seventeen. In two thousand seventeen to two thousand nineteen, they conducted very many recruiting strategies. Police Department open house, the MCOS PT test, so they could see if they were physically fit, passed that state mandated test, a women's summit was conducted. We surveyed all past applicants to find out what the barriers were to employment as a police officer and specifically with the Grand Rapids Police Department. Our Grow Your Own initiatives, pathways to policing, the Explorers, the Youth Police Academy, and the Intern program. In 2020, we had thirty-four interns. Forty-one percent of those interns were minorities. Eleven of them had participated in the Youth Police Academy or the Explorers program. They started the Day in the Life video that gave recruits an opportunity to see what it was like to be in various units throughout the department. Advertising campaigns were conducted on social media, TV, radio, billboards, and print. We also worked with the Human Resource Department to streamline hiring process. Going forward, the community engagement unit has looked at the next two years, strategies to increase our recruiting of minorities and so that this department really reflects our community. They've developed an online digital campaign called Join GRPD. This is a seven-video series with an opportunity to interact with recruiting staff that will answer questions about the topics covered. They created a separate progressive website designed specifically for recruiting, which we'll launch soon. They'd like to create partnerships with minority fraternities and sororities at colleges and clubs, and create relationships with multicultural affair officers at colleges, the NAACP, the Hispanic Center, the Urban League, to assist us in our career. We'd like to continue to focus on the Grow Your Own initiatives, Youth Police Academy, the Explorers, the On Base, the Intern program, and then work with Human Resources on incentives for a more competitive career. Unfortunately, all these recruiting strategies- Unfortunately, all these recruiting strategies, including the 2021 Police Academy class, are currently on hold due to citywide hiring. I'll turn it over to Allison Sutter, who will discuss the new police department metrics.
Deputy Chief Reifenberg, I think you have one more slide for your hiring update.
Hiring update for the recent hires that were discussed in June. The chief staff posting closed on August 5. Initial interviews are scheduled next week and will be conducted on the 17th. Our public information officer, again, that posting was posted, and the posting is closed on the 6th of August. Initial interviews are expected to be scheduled in September. I'll pass it over to you, Allison.
Thank you Deputy Chief. Hello Commissioners, Mayor, City Manager. Appreciate having the opportunity here to discuss how I've been working to support the Police Department in their draft plan as well as the development of the Police Metrics Dashboard. I really want to start by saying I am thanking Deputy Chief Reifenberg, Captain Sternstein, as well as Sergeant Adams from our Police Department. They've all worked very hard to gather a lot of data and a lot of information so that we could make it available on the website. City Manager also mentioned want to acknowledge the phenomenal work of our customer service and innovation team, Ms. Becky Joklover, Mr. Zach Teal, and Mr. Ethan Bulkins, who have done a significant amount of work to take all of the data that's been provided to get it available on our open performance page, which has been publicly available since last Friday and is accessible so that anyone in the public can go and view these metrics and get information. This is phase one right now, which is available, but we'll be continuously working to add more metrics to the Police Metric Dashboard as more data comes in and as the Police Department works to finalize their strategic plan. And really want to just emphasize that the purpose of this dashboard is to help measure progress on these important metrics and on the implementation of their plan, and really to live the transparency that Chief Payne spoke about in his opening, and also to create a mechanism to hold the police accountable for the goals that they've established in their plan. So also want to just note that there is some information on our demographic statement. A big thank you to Ms. Stout, who heads our equity work at the city in putting this together and talking about why we lead with racial equity, and how across the entire city, inclusive of the Police Department, we're in working to embed equity throughout all of our operations. And if you recall, in the city's strategic plan, we made a commitment that we would disaggregate all data to the extent possible by race, ethnicity, gender identity, and geography. And that's something that we've been working closely with the Police Department on with their metrics as well. It'll be, it continues to be a work in progress. Oftentimes, there are some limitations due to the data that's been available, and we've made a commitment across the city to continue to explore the processes in which we collect this information so that we can ensure that we are collecting that information. And for those in the public, you can click on this slide. It's available on the website and it will lead you to our demographic statement. So now, just to help orient you when you go to visit the dashboard, what you will see. So some of the key elements, at the top, you will see the title of the, of this metric. So in this particular instance, it's the police personnel turnover rate. Next, you'll see the most recent data point that is available. So the last measure was 10.67% turnover for police personnel. You will then see the timeframe for the metric, which is often the calendar year or the fiscal year. So here, this being fiscal year 20, running from July 1st through June 30th. And then there are four different status that you will find that are indicated here in text and also via the color that you will see. And so if the metric is showing in green, that means that the goal has been met. If it's showing in this gold copper color, that means that currently near the goal, and here, the goal being that police turnover is less than 10%. I do just want to make a note here that with respect to this metric, this is inclusive of all police personnel. So not just sworn officers, but this does include civilian staff in the Police Department as well. The other two status updates that you will see, if it is in blue, that means that we're still measuring this particular metric and the development of a goal is in process. Or if the metric shows up in red, that means that the goal has not been reached at this time. And then there's the link that says see more, which will take you to additional data. And I won't go through all of this because I'm going to bring up the actual dashboard to walk through this, to show you how this will look and provide a couple hints for the data to make sure everybody can fully explore the information. But the intent is to show all of this additional data for each of these metrics. And we did really work to show, when possible, as much as five years of historic data if that data has been available. These are the current 16 metrics that are available on the Police Metric Dashboard as a part of Phase One. So they are organized into six different categories. The first is accountability, and here you'll find the metric on the number of complaints that have been filed against police personnel and submitted to Internal Affairs. For the budget category, you'll see information going back historically with respect to the police budget. In the community engagement area, you will see both the results from our community survey with respect to the percentage of residents that rate their overall feeling of safety in Grand Rapids as excellent or good, as well as number of community events that the police have been participating in. Really building a lot out under the crime statistics, inclusive of one metric showing total Part One and Part Two crime rates, as well as getting into more specifics on particular crimes such as murder or larceny or gunfire. And this will definitely be an area where more of those individual-specific crimes and the information will be built out. The criminal charge statistics is a metric from our district court in terms of the number of felony and misdemeanor charge records for like offenses. And the last category being staffing, where you'll find metrics around the percentage of beats that are covered 24/7/365 by the officers, the number of authorized or budgeted police personnel, as well as looking at turnover and Police Department new hires. And so to wrap up, I just want to take a minute to actually show you the police dashboard. So as I mentioned, the link will take you and you'll see all six of those categories when you first enter the police dashboard, and then you have the ability to click on the see more data to get additional information. And so I want to, as a couple of examples, this is the metric on complaints submitted to Internal Affairs. And so as I mentioned, working to show five years of historic data in this top-line graph that you'll see for each of the metrics. And then an area where some qualitative information is provided explaining, you know, how's the data collected, how often is it collected, from where does it come, why does this data matter, looking at and describing any impacts that may have happened since the March 2020 stay-at-home order. And then you can find some additional details. So here with respect to complaints, the top chart is breaking down the outcome from external complaints, and the bottom chart is breaking down and showing the outcome of all internal complaints. And trying to navigate to the other one, and of course, I can't at this time. So then, oh, here we go. Okay, so police turnover, personnel turnover. Again, as I mentioned, the goal being that it's less than 10%, which is the goal for across our city, for all personnel. And a reminder that this is inclusive of non-sworn personnel at the Police Department as well. And so here on the line graph, you can see that actually in fiscal year 20, it is the highest rate of turnover with respect to it being 10.67% going back to fiscal year 17, seeing that that was the low. It's just shy of 6% with respect to police turnover. So again, similar type of information qualitatively that you can read. And then here, wanting to be able to show how metrics are being disaggregated by race and ethnicity. With respect to the data, we currently have race and ethnicity as combined, but we have made a commitment moving forward to work to try to disaggregate and show race separately from ethnicity. This is looking at police turnover rate. So you can key in, and here I'll just give an example, it would show the Native American turnover is 50%. But if you scroll down below, this is where it gives you that context that it was one particular person. So noting that the total number of Native Americans that we had at the department at the time would have been two, hence why it's showing 50%. Then you can do, this is showing the current breakdown of our police employees by race and ethnicity. And this is the same statistic here. So in fiscal year 2020, the race and ethnicity of our Police Department in comparison to the top bar is the 2010 census data, and that will be updated to the 2020 census data as soon as that is available. And also recognizing that not everyone that is counted in the census is of work-appropriate age, but wanting to show this as a comparison between our police personnel as well as the current demographics of our community. You will see the same information by gender if you continue to scroll down. And at the very bottom, I wanted to show you, this is where we have one of our more interactive graphs. And so this is looking at police turnover for the reason for leaving. So in 2020, if you click into this, it will actually then show you the breakdown between retirement and resignation. And then if you were even to click again on resignation, you can see the count by race and ethnicity. And then if you were to click in further, it will then show you the breakdown by male versus female. And so I just have two others quickly that I'll show you, gunfire incidents. Again, really encourage everyone to read what a gunfire incident is to have an understanding. You can see over time with an uptick in 2019 in comparison to 2018. But here, you can scroll down and it provides additional information about the number of victim-related incidents, broken down by race and ethnicity or gender. It also then describes and provides data on the number of the suspects and the race and ethnicity, and at the very bottom, the number of arrests. And for each of these, I do want to call out, there's a view source data link, so anybody can click on this and have access to the raw data. So if there's a desire from anybody in the community to do a different type of analysis, they have full access to all of the raw data. So just the last one quickly I'll show is the number of community events that police participate in. We have three years of historic data here. And if you scroll down to the bottom, again, this is an interactive chart where you can click on 2018 and it will actually tell you the different types of community engagement activities, from immigration talks to recruiting events to school events, to give a little bit more information there. And finally, also showing geographically how this information is being shared, and this is broken down by beat. So you can hover on each of the particular police beats and get some additional information on the total number of events that have occurred in each of those beats. So with that, that wraps up my presentation on the dashboard, and I'm going to turn it back over to the chief.
Thank you, Allison. As we conclude our presentation, I want to reemphasize that our strategic plan is specific, provides defined action steps with measurable outcomes, and will fundamentally, fundamentally transform policing in Grand Rapids to a neighborhood-based policing model that will help us build and maintain trust with our community. This moment is important, is an important turning point for our department relationship with our community. We will focus on developing mutual trust through mutual respect with members of our community. Our strategies will help build stronger bond and safe, shared neighborhoods for all. The decisions we make today and in the coming future around this plan will impact the lives of everyone we serve. It is important to note that this strategic plan was developed around our current allocated resources. This fundamental shift in operation is dependent upon retaining those resources, and some strategies may require additional resources in the future. Today, I call for your strong support for this transformational plan. Your support will signal to our community that we are united and advancing equality, justice, and reform in Grand Rapids. I also ask for your support of our Police Department and the officers who tirelessly serve our community every day. Their work is critical to keeping our neighborhoods and communities safe. I firmly believe that working together in unity is the only path forward, the only way we can make a lasting change. We cannot let ourselves, let our differences divide us. We are stronger together. As we transform our policing model, we will engage community members. We welcome honest, constructive feedback so we can adjust what we are doing to ensure we are connected to our community and aligned with my stated vision for policing in Grand Rapids. We look forward to continuing our work with and for our community. Thank you for the opportunity to present today our strategic plan this morning. And I'll turn it over to the City Manager.
Thank you, Chief, and all those who presented this morning. You've done a fine job. Mayor and Commissioners, I'm very proud of our staff and the work that they've done in a very short amount of time. We have a lot of very talented and capable people in this organization and who continue to rise to the challenge, and I expect them to do that and even more in the future. I also want to acknowledge, I feel to acknowledge the contributions of our Law Department, who also made a significant contribution to some of the reform efforts on the de-escalation policy, as well as the inclusion of, the perspective of the Oversight Officer. Appreciate their work as well. Let me remind you, what you're hearing today is an update. This is not a plan for your approval. There is no requirement for the City Commission either now or in the future to approve this plan. This is an operational plan, but we're doing it in light of transparency. And so the Police Chief is sharing with you his initial draft. We are open to feedback. Feedback is not decisions or votes. It is not directions. It is exactly that, it's feedback. We'll likewise get feedback from community members as part of his engagement transparency, and we will take that into consideration. All feedback is exactly what it is. It's, 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 it's a perspective that we need before finalizing the plan. Tough decisions will be, need to, will need to be made, and that is why we have Police Chief and City Manager to eventually make those. So this is not, I want to be very clear, this is not a plan that we are submitting for the City Commission to vote and approve upon. It is an operational plan. Many other departments have operational strategic plans that have not been before the Commission. Given the unique circumstances of what is happening within our community, we thought it was very appropriate for the plan to be, to be developed, to be made known. And then that will ultimately affect the conversations that you will have around strategy, as, I'm seeing around funding, as we begin to look at the budget and determining our priorities. Those conversations, again, are scheduled, I think, in November, when we do the, Ms. Sutter will have to help me, I think October, November, I'll have the time right in front of me, when we will begin to do the prioritization and planning, and ultimately, we'll have mid-year decisions by the end of this year, then we'll begin prioritization and planning for fiscal year 2022, as well for budget adoption. So with that, Mayor, I want to thank you for your patience, Commissioners. I'll turn it over to you to see what questions you might have of the Chief, Mayor, or staff.
Great, thank you, City Manager, and thank you, Chief Payne. I'll just, I'll just make a couple comments, one specific question, then I'll open it up for my colleagues. First, Chief, and everyone who worked on this, I just want to say thank you. I think it's a very comprehensive plan. It includes many of the recommendations from prior studies, but also many of the recommendations that many of us have heard over the last couple months. So I appreciate that. My question is specific to process related to feedback. Is, is there going to be some type of formal process where community members can give written feedback? Or I know with the Office of Public Oversight and Accountability, there was a process where folks could, could learn about the plan and then provide written comments. So I'm just curious, is something similar going to be done, just so that we can share that with the community?
Why don't you go ahead and respond and I'll add?
Yes, yes, Mayor. There, there is, actually launched today, I've been working with the Communication Office, there will be a link where the community can provide feedback on the plan that will be published here. We're also looking to have town hall, a town hall meeting, I think it's set for later this month, to where we can get feedback. And also, I'll continue to engage with the groups that I have mentioned. Grand Rapids Area Pastors have been, presented part of the plan. I will continue to do that. So answer your, hopefully that answers your question. We are looking to get feedback from a digital, or from a link that will provide, that's being provided.
Great, thanks, Chief. That's very helpful. City Manager, anything to add? And then I'll see if my colleagues.
No, I just was going to ask Ms. Snowbuckner to come on and describe. I think the Chief did a good job of describing the digital inclusion and the way that we'll get the feedback, but Ms. Snowbuckner might have some additional insight.
Yes, thank you, City Manager. Good morning, everyone. It's still morning as I see by the clock. So the Chief mentioned the digital town hall that we're looking to do. That will be another opportunity for the Chief to walk through the strategic plan, provide additional information, and then we will give folks an opportunity to provide their feedback via Facebook as well as a call-in option. And we are also working with our community partners to help us push out the link to the strategic plan as well as the opportunity to provide feedback.
the strategic plan as well as the opportunity to provide feedback.
Great, thank you, that's helpful. And to make sure that this, the commission gets that as well, we can help promote it in the community. So I'll start here, Commissioner Moody, I saw your hand up, you want to weigh in?
Yes, Madam Mayor. First, I want to thank the city manager and the chief and his staff for the work that they put into this. I have one question, and I'm not sure if you can answer this right now, Chief or City Manager, but I appreciate the fact that you put in your presentation on something on mental and behavioral conditions with the community. But I wonder, is there anything put in place for the police department itself for mental and behavioral situations? Because as you may know, the department itself sometimes can be under just, under distress very heavily. So is there anything in place for your officers in terms of their mental and behavioral stability?
Yes, Commissioner, we, we've had our peer support team that's been in place for years and there's a city EAP that's been in place. But part of last year's or this year's budget, we were able to hire a mental health behavioral specialist internally. Also, we hired, as mentioned earlier, the external person to work with victims of violent crime. We have an internal person that is working with our officer regularly, full time within the department where they can reach out to, to her to get direction and working the systems that may, they need to navigate.
Yeah, the reason why I asked that question is I wanted to just think about the fact that that should be a part of your strategic plan as well for your officers.
Yep, good, thank you, sir. Yep.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, other questions or comments before we move on to the next presentation? Commissioner Sassi?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief, for the presentation, for all those that were a part of this effort. I have, I have a number of questions. I'll try to be mindful of our next presentation and reach directly to you, Chief. One of my questions was around the different sort of populations that we focus on and have a specific call out about what we're going to interact, not only with them, but also with other agencies. So I'm thinking about, for those who may be undocumented, children. But one of the questions to kind of build off what Commissioner Moody talked about is those who might be, I'm thinking specifically about people that have reached out to me who have children, adult children who have autism or any other different type of cognitive ability that might prevent them from understanding commands that could come from a police officer or from anybody else that is talking to them. So I don't know if that is something specific, but that was one of the questions that I had specifically about that because we call out other populations and really work to understand how they are going to interact with our police department. So that's one. The other specific question I had, you know, from the presentation today and the draft that was presented, fully support, I think recognizing that every neighborhood is different. And, you know, given the wards that we all serve, they're very different, have different elements and realities of the people that are living there. So I'm supportive of that. I do want to say that one of the questions I had was specifically how we see ourselves engaging with neighborhood associations. And I know not every single neighborhood has an association. Commissioner, Commissioner Lanier often reminds me of that. And, and not that neighborhood associations are the only way that people engage, but I also think that we at the city have often talked about, you know, in our presentations, not just for the PD, but other departments of how do we connect and interact with our neighborhood associations to share information? In fact, Commissioner Jones and I will be at a presentation tomorrow with a neighborhood association that, you know, asked to, that reached out to us to do something outside. So that's one of the other questions that I had. And then probably the other, just a quick question I had was really around, and I wanted to just look up and highlight, is around the homelessness, you know, individuals who are experiencing homelessness, who are part of that population. So I appreciate that update. And I think, you know, when I think back to some previous conversations from this year, you know, only being on the commission for eight months, that is probably a majority of the calls that I receive, you know, to our office expressing the deep concern about, you know, sometimes about being very, very concerned that it's hot out or cold out and how people are interacting with our community. We've had people who, you know, feel like people are taking over their neighborhoods or, you know, sentiments like that, which I have, I, I have concerns about. And I think how do we decriminalize that experience of homelessness? Because I think that is not just a Grand Rapids experience that's probably, you know, in our country. And we have an opportunity, especially just again, knowing the racial disparities of those who are involved with our homelessness system. So I think that is a, is a huge area. I also want to say, you know, for those who are watching that we, we cannot do this alone. And I think to continue to look at the other municipalities around us. So, you know, I will specifically say, you know, Kent County and the leaders and electeds in that, in that municipal body, that is important to note. So please continue to reach out to us and we'll continue to reach out to that body as well as we move forward in this work. So those are the three things that I wanted to highlight. And I think the last thing I will say is, I, Chief, I really do appreciate you, you know, the things that you said at the beginning of the, of the meeting. One of the things that I had in my notes was around language and that language matters and the ways that we use to describe our community are important. And so I am grateful to that language. We've seen that sort of at the state level of, you know, our governor asking, or you know, proclaiming racism as a public health issue. That was some of the work as it related in our safe task force as well. And I think that it is important to, to really frame that conversation and to be, you know, I think a lot of people feel uncomfortable sometimes with that terminology, but I am grateful that those were the words that you shared with us this morning. So thank you.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. Your first question about autism, yes, that's all of our recruits, when we bring them into the in-house, the initial training, they receive, they receive a block on that. Plus is integrated in our ongoing training. So it's a part of our training as we, so it's not a one and done. We continue to make sure that their training is done around that. I'm sorry, your second question.
Specifically, thank you.
Yes, I've had discussions with actually one of my members of the police chief advisory team talking about that. It came up in a different meeting, a question about whether we would entertain, years ago we had mobile field offices. And maybe what I had discussions with the person in our, on my team, they suggested that maybe churches could be more involved in establishing a place where neighbors could come out and meet officers that are working there. And I, I want to explore that more, but I also want my officers out of the cars, interacting with the neighborhood, whether they're on foot, bicycle. But I want to explore having a location where they can go and have meetings with neighborhoods. And you are correct, not every neighborhood association, there's not neighborhood associations in every part of the city, but having those officers accountable for the neighborhood that they're assigned, working with those neighbors, whether it's a formal neighborhood association or just a block, individual block, that's something that we're going to look for our officers to get behind and also assist in them establishing that. So you're right on point. That's part of our neighborhood policing philosophy of officers interacting with those individual neighborhoods, whether they're formal or not. The last question I believe you had was about the homeless situation. We are fully behind the hot team, the homeless outreach team and working with the fire department. We're in discussions about bringing, and that is part of our plan, bringing in experts to assist us in that. Taking somebody to jail is not a solution to that problem, nor is taking them to the hospital a solution. We have to come up with better ways of navigating the many systems. And there's a lot of great work that's being done out there. We need to coordinate on our part so we can better assist the homeless that are out there.
Thank you, Chief. I just have just one more comment. I would just say I appreciate the, the information on the feedback and I think that's important. And I think for probably all of us, you know, this has been, you know, months that we haven't expected in our lives, especially this year. 2020 was supposed to be the year and it, it has had a number of challenges. And so I just urge us to say, and to the public, as we engage in this draft plan and get feedback, there will be continued uncomfortable conversations. And I think a recognition that, that is not about, it shouldn't be individually based, but it should be looking at the systems that are, that have been full of systemic racism. And I also think that we need to specifically, you know, call out, when we say, when we know the statistics as Ms. Sutter presented, we should say black or we should say Latinx. And, you know, I think those are things that I'm getting used to as well. I often use the term personal color to describe myself, but I think that there are some points where the disparities exist so much that to be very specific in, in the identity of those that we are discussing. So thank you, Chief. I appreciate the time today as well as the rest of the, the team that presented.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mayor, if I could just follow up for, for a moment, thank you, Commissioner Sassi, for those questions and points. I just want to say summarily, I think what you, what our department's trying to do is to shift from just a public safety philosophy only to be more inclusive of public safety and health. And the questions that you've asked about the behavioral issues, both in terms of community members as well as the preparedness of our officers, as well as how we approach the issue of homelessness. We, we are, we are not criminalizing homelessness. We are trying to encourage utilization of current resources and do it in a, in a visible way. And we're looking to partner with other community agencies. The last, I did check with Mrs. O'Hatch earlier today and, and the shelters, at least from last report, are not completely full. And so we're seeing people who either are unaware or unwilling to utilize those resources. And so we're trying to find a better way to engage with them. And other communities for those populations would, would have looked at ways to criminalize and arrest. And we're trying to be more mindful of approaching this as a public health issue and not just public safety and arresting our way out of it. So I look forward to the continued conversations with Network 180 and other partners at the county in addressing this. You, you hit the nail right on the head. This is not just a city issue. We do not, to declare many issues as public health issues, I think is, is good, is very declarative, but unlike the state and even the county, we do not have a health authority to make that declaration with the ability to enforce it. So we're going to need more partnership and collaboration from other governmental entities as well as some of the community based organizations in the nonprofit ecosystem. So I look forward to those aspects of improving the plan as well.
Thanks, thanks, City Manager. All right, let me see if there are any other comments from my colleagues. I'll see Commissioner O'Connor and then Commissioner Ruppert. And then I, I would like to give, make sure we have time for Mr. Davis to provide an update as well. So Commissioner O'Connor?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, thank you to the chief and the manager and everyone involved in helping get this plan together to present to us today. You know, I really appreciate the fact that this is, you know, starts with a kind of an outcome, goal based approach that we're really looking at, you know, what we're trying to achieve. And then seeing that there's been a variety of strategies, both internal to the police department as well as kind of a change in business model for how we approach some of these problems. And so I really appreciate that, that this approach to thinking about the strategic plan and also recognizing that this is a, this isn't something where we just snap our fingers and it's, it's, the change happens overnight, that this is going to take some, take some time, it's going to take some, probably some investment into, you know, doing things differently in both the people and technology. And I'm excited, you know, that there's, and I'm sure more strategies will, will be developed as we look at how we address these outcomes. And so I guess I just have really just one question as it relates to kind of, you know, I see, I, I think I understand the long-term vision of some of this, but in the short term, I think there's just, you know, as we, as we continue to grapple with, with gun violence in Grand Rapids, you know, how we, how we in the short term try to address that, that kind of immediate need while, you know, investing in things like pure violence and other things that might have longer term outcomes. Like there has to be, there has to be a recognition that there is, that, you know, there's a spike in, in negative outcomes happening right now that we need to, to address in the short term.
Thanks, Commissioner. That's a, that's an excellent point to bring up. So thank you. Chief, you want to respond to that?
Yes, Mayor. Commissioner Connor, good question because we are experiencing it now. And what I can say is our officers are out there engaged. Again, I've always said this is not just a police solution. What we are seeing, we're getting some cooperation from the community. They do not want gun violence in their, in the community. So having officers engaged and supported by me and everyone else in this city, to be able to go out and do their job is really important to the officers out there. I did a press conference, I believe about a week or so ago where I highlighted four incidents where we took guns off the street and it got very little play. But we are out there doing it and we will continue to do it. Gun violence and illegal guns out there in the community is something that's very concerning. I've also started looking at, had a discussion with another member of my advisory team. They're bringing a lot of good stuff to the table of gun buyback. We'll take a look at that. We, we have not done one for years. I know other communities are doing it and we probably should explore on how maybe we can bring that here to Grand Rapids to get guns off the street. Whether they're legal guns or guns that people just don't want in their house anymore, that's one less gun off the street. So we'll look to explore that also.
Chief, can, can we be, I think it's important that we be as transparent and direct about this conversation as possible. And when you use the words officers are starting to engage, can you inform the commission and public that that means more contact with suspicious behavior and would require officers to not assume that someone is immediately innocent, but, excuse me, guilty, but begin to, to more proactively investigate specific types of behavior if they see people might be carrying and involved in other, other activity? Can you talk a little bit about that?
Absolutely. And that's going to require officers getting out, making contacts. I guess I must back up. When COVID hit, there was, it wasn't just our department, officers were encouraged not to engage as much, to try and handle things over the phone. And quite frankly, the community abided by the stay at home order. So there was not as much engagement going on with officers and people in the community. We have seen that change and our officers have to get out and they will get out and they have been getting out and making contact with people. If they see somebody with a gun, their expectation is, is to investigate it and to go out and determine whether it's legal or not. What we're finding, the majority of the time they are not legal. This will require more engagement or contacts than any time you introduce a gun in a situation. It really creates a heightened sense of what's going on with the officers to make sure that things are done safely. We have been very fortunate, even with the number of guns being taken off, it has not led to a deadly force encounter recently. That could change today. And that is a concern of mine, it's a concern of the officers, making sure that they are being supported by me and others in the city. So they will continue to engage, they have been doing it and that is my expectation. With everything that we're doing, we still have a responsibility to keep this city safe. And we can do, we will do that by engaging those out there committing criminal acts.
Thanks, Chief. I'll go to Commissioner Ruppert and then Commissioner Jones.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Chief, thank you for your work. You have been working, you've been working and working and working. And I do know that there have been so many candid conversations within the department about all of this, fierce conversations. And so I appreciate you leaning into those conversations. I want to just share a few of my early affirmations and I have one question, but I also want to just thank you, Chief, for acknowledging the problematic history of policing. I think that's really, really important in this moment for us to do. And for your emphasis on empathy, I think that- I think that the training shifts that we've added to train officers on racism, trauma, poverty, mental health, that's what builds empathy. But also, like you said just a moment ago, getting out of the cars and engaging and shifting from a few specialists who get all the trust in the community to shifting that laterally throughout the department, I think is going to be huge for building empathy in the community. I'm eager to hear what the feedback will be from the community. They are calling for radical change right now. And like Commissioner Yasasi said, there are some, there's going to be some hard conversations yet to have. And just like you leaned in with your team, I just, I encourage and ask you to lean in with the community to weigh through some of those questions about, is this radical enough? But some of the innovations that I want to affirm in this early moment is, you know, the emphasis on working with the mental health and homeless. I have one question about that that I'll share in a second. The emphasis on civilianization, the data and the transparency, working for violence reduction. Commissioner Jones has been sending me a lot of articles about how community-based organizations are effective at reducing violence in addition to working with the police department. The emphasis on restorative justice, that lateral, spreading that trust out by moving toward that neighborhood, neighborhood model. And really, to me, the thing that I'm, I want to affirm is the openness to abandon those problematic practices and embrace new ones. And, and I do appreciate that openness because to the credit of the, the department, we've taken reform about as far as we can take reform because there's been that openness from the department. And so now it is time for innovation and these other things call us to pick up new practices and, and procedures and evaluator policies. And I just want to, I just want to affirm and appreciate your openness to doing that. So thank you for your work. You have been working and I see your work and appreciate your work.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I want to say thank you so much for your, your presentation on this morning as well as your staff who also participated in the, the presentation. I want you to know that I'm in full support of this, this draft plan. I think I can say that with confidence in that when it comes to a strategic plan or, or any plan, it really comes down to obviously, you know, carrying out, carrying out the mischievous steps to actually complete and accomplish.
Commissioner, we're getting some feedback. There we go. Okay.
It really is about when, when we're talking about completing or carrying out a plan, it has everything to do with, at the end of the day, you know, you will, the organization or entity, whoever carries out a plan, will either succeed at it or fail. And so I think all we can ask, I think what, what we can ask for now more than ever is you've provided something in which you will have an opportunity to carry out. And the hope is that, the, the real hope is that we will be successful in this endeavor. But at least we have something to work from. And I want to commend you, I think it was mentioned by my colleague, Commissioner Repart. I think it's critically important when you publicly acknowledge, as you have, the historic inequity that has been in play with regards to communities of color, historically marginalized populations, as well as the poor and with regards to interaction with policing practices and criminal justice systems. So I think that's critically important that we continue to recognize that for what it is because it's there. And I think what is sometimes problematic is when there's a, I guess, a very conscious decision not to recognize that. It's just really, really important that we recognize that there's history here and that we need to do all that we can to reverse that and move in a, in a much more positive direction so that historically marginalized, marginalized populations do not feel as if they are operating in a space of inequity when it comes to interaction with, with law enforcement and, and policing practices. Also want to say thank you for, it was Commissioner Yasasi who mentioned, words matter. And so the fact that you are transitioning to framing engagements or presence in community as neighborhood-based policing, I think says a lot. Because first and foremost, we all may be civilians, but I don't necessarily want to be and I've talked to enough neighbors, don't want to be referred to as a civilian. I am a neighbor to the individuals who not just live next door to me, but other residents throughout this city of ours, as well as my hope would be that the men and women of the Grand Rapids Police Department would see each of us as neighbors and not civilians. And so I think that speaks volumes in terms of the, the goal or the, the plan to frame interaction or presence in community as being neighborhood-based policing. I also want to give you a thumbs up for the focus around the, the crime reduction team and taking very much a data-driven approach to, or to, to really get at the criminal offenders that are present in our community. And I think it, I think that that particular objective is going to take a robust amount of interaction with community because you're talking about the potential of engaging, you know, the hotspot policing as well as, and, and under that, this idea of really leaning in in a way that perhaps the residents in our city may not have the greatest confidence in. In particular, to go one step further, the idea of everything from ShotSpotter to other technology, the drones and such, I think it's just going to be critically important that, and I, and I believe you to be someone who will do all that it takes to hear from as many people as possible about their perhaps lack of trust or, or uneasiness with wanting to have that in their particular neighborhood or their community. Again, based on the historical interaction with, with policing. Also want to thank you for your willingness to lean in and be a part of the, the solution around evidence-based strategies and reducing violence, community violence. There's no doubt that we're in the midst right now of way too much community violence, in particular gun violence. And I'm of the opinion that the police have a role to play with that in terms of reducing gun violence. But I think historically, the, there's been a, the, the vast majority of the dependence has been on law enforcement. And I think that now we are looking at an opportunity to engage other organizations, other initiatives, other opportunities to get at the issue and not have it all fall on, on law enforcement. I think there's a lot to be said about a community knowing their community. And so the idea of not just something like cure violence, but the potential of having more of a neighborhood-based approach to get at some of these issues because they are complex. And I think everyone on the screen right now understands that if it were as simple, if community, if reducing community violence was as simple as getting guns off the street, then I think other communities throughout the country would have had a pretty good track record, could have a, a pretty good track record in making that happen. But we're talking about systems and structures that have been broken for, for some time now that unfortunately have led to significant disparities where because of proximity and because of, of poverty, you have an uptick in crime and community violence. And so thank you for your willingness to lean in there. I also want to publicly recognize J.D. Chapman, who has been working feverishly. I know, Chief, he's been in contact with you and others in community about his desire to see cure violence and other models come into play in our beloved community. And, and he is someone who's in the trenches, who has garnered the respect of those who are perhaps engaged in some of this behavior. And I just want to recognize his, his efforts thus far. Lastly, Chief, I want to, and looking at the plan again, recognize that Objective Three under the, the section around engagement, you have this objective of attracting, hiring, retaining high-performing employees who embrace a guardian mentality and neighborhood-based policing philosophy. I want to take a moment right now to really lift up Grand Rapids Community College and their police academy. And this is in no way a, no way taking anything away from Grand Valley State University and their fine police academy. But my hope is that we really begin to have a greater dependency upon GRCC and their police academy, simply because when you look at their student body and those who are enrolled in the police academy, you will find a student body that mirrors the community that we live in. And so these are individuals who, quite a, quite a few of them live in Grand Rapids and perhaps they grew up wanting to be in law enforcement. And so they're, they're looking to make that dream a reality. They're attending GRCC. And I have a significant amount of trust in Jermaine Reese, who heads up that program, a former police officer, who again has lived experiences being a black man in America and a law enforcement officer. And he is in a position right now where he's got a significant responsibility because he's preparing these folks to go into law enforcement in a time that is, again, extremely volatile. And I just have significant trust in him and his, his ability to provide or produce graduating classes that I think will do, will bring great strength to our department. And so really want to lift up GRCC and their police academy. And I'm forever grateful for Dr. Pink and his leadership in this as well because he has been, he has stepped up, he has leaned in, he has shown a desire to want to be part of the solution. And as we all know, there are dollars available for GRPS grads or for, for GR, for students, high school, high school graduates from Grand Rapids to tap into the promise, promise own opportunities for, for, for free schooling at GRCC. And I'll close with this, and that is, I want to suggest that our future desired state as it pertains to policing is a place where the police are not the primary institution responsible for public safety. That is, I believe, a future desired state, that as I stated, we have perhaps a greater focus on trying to be as inclusive as possible with solutions that include community-based entities, organizations and individuals and not just, again, put the onus on or the responsibility to public safety on law enforcement. I also want to suggest that methods that we've historically used to reduce violence are unsustainable. And we need to start thinking of a strategy for confronting violence that relies less on those methods. I think it's fair to say that in the past, ways in which we've historically reduced violence is we lock, lock folks up. Well, that's unsustainable. And so we have to get beyond that. And so we have things like restorative justice. We have, I think, things like a law department within Grand Rapids and a city attorney, Hitchcock, who's very much open-minded to finding alternative methods. And the same can be said for county prosecutor, Chris Becker. And so that is my hope, that we can get to that place where we stop focusing on what we've done or the methodology that we've used in the past and look to be more strategic. And then finally, Chief, the last question is, in all of this, and again, I applaud your work, I support you, I support this plan. I'm wondering, in your conversations thus far internally, do you have, what is the, what is the conversation, is the support there from the police union for this said draft strategic plan currently?
Thank you, Commissioner. You bring up a lot of good points. And I wanted to touch on them. I just met with Director Reese last week, Grand Rapids Community College. We talked about partnering together with the idea of having a pipeline through Grand Rapids schools, through his school, and maybe someday being a Grand Rapids police officer. I just wanted to touch on that. I think Dr. Pink and City Manager started that discussion and Director Reese and I are continuing it. As far as the police union, I don't, I've had conversations with them, they've been at the table through some of the discussions and formulating this plan. So they're aware of it. It was released to them. We went over, we touched everyone in the department, I believe, where we had an opportunity to go over the plan with them. I don't want to speak for the union as far as support. What I will say to that though, just like I'm receiving feedback from many different places, we had to wheel up there where this plan was, came about through all the feedback that we're getting and that we're going to continue to get. And I will take the feedback from the union also, but this is my plan moving forward for the Grand Rapids Police Department. And that's where we're going to work toward. I will continue to listen. There's things that I'll hear from the community that may not get incorporated in the plan. But as far as the union's concerned, this is a plan for the Grand Rapids Police Department. And this is how we're going to move forward. I believe in this plan. It's been put together by a, a group of people. We've shared it, we'll continue to take feedback. But that may be something that the union may want to give their opinion on a plan. But this is the direction we're going. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. All right, any final questions or comments, Commissioner Lanier?
Thanks, Mayor. Chief, thank you so very much for your opening remarks. As Commissioner Yasasi stated, words matter. And I am very thankful to hear the words that you used as you described the history of policing in America, as you accepted ownership for how policing has been done and the disparities that exist locally here in Grand Rapids. And as you talked about wanting to move forward as a department and implementing changes to reduce the disparities that exist. Thank you so much for that. I, I, I think it's the beginning stages of, of healing for our community. I think nationally or internationally, we're seeing this movement about policing and changes specifically to policing in America, though international conversations. And I think it's important to see the leader of a police department talk candidly about what the community is saying, is experiencing and feeling and hearing and making sure that you're empathizing with those concerns and even expressing that you're sorrowful for how it's been done in the past. I'd like to thank your team for their presentations this morning, as well as your department for their input on this strategic plan. I have been, I know, one of the key commissioners who's been asking for a strategic plan from the police department because I think it's important to know the direction that the department is headed in. And I know when there's a new leader in any department that they're going to want to create the vision for their team. And so it was, for me, it's been very important to kind of hear from you and, and the department, like what's the direction you're headed in? So I appreciate you sharing this draft with us. I have a few questions and I'll, I'll start with, and, and a lot of what's, what I have kind of listed here has been stated, so I'll, I'll do my best to not be redundant, but where there are some nuances that I'd like to pull out, I'll try and do that. And so I'll start with questions about young people. And right now, when we're having conversations with young people about the violent acts that are taking place here locally, some of the stories that we hear and, and they frequently will come up in, in like safe pitch nights when we're having kind of this, this moment where we're engaging in, in violent acts that are happening in the community to hear from them, or at, at community organizations or with leaders from those organizations who are leading youth. Young people are saying that they are afraid. They are afraid in this city and as a result of their fear, they are choosing to buy illegal firearms in order to protect themselves. And so I know that the end result is an underage juvenile has a gun and they're shooting. And, and, and that's kind of where the story starts when it's talked about, even in the updates that we may receive about the acts of, acts of gun violence in the community. But it starts really with fear and, and out of fear, they are choosing to do this because they don't know what else to do. to do. And this plan doesn't specifically speak to that, but it, I want you to know that um I think that's an element that that we need to address. And I don't know what the solution is. I don't know that we'll see if we have a gun buyback program, those guns being turned in. Um, I suspect likely not. So there has to be another way for parents to know how to support their children who may be fearful as they are roaming the streets in the city of Grand Rapids. So that's that's one thing I kind of want to, and maybe if you already have a response, that would be great to hear from. This is a quick one um on the data dashboard. I'm curious to know if there has been any um data testing done on the data dashboard. I will be asking that repeatedly every time we have technology that we're asking the public to use, because I think it's imperative for us to get feedback before it goes live for the public to use it. Um, you touched on this a little bit. Um, and and I want to hear specifically what it is that you're planning to implement to reduce this Ferguson effect or police flu, where we have officers sharing with citizens that there's nothing I can do right now, because, you know, policing in this city is politicized right now. And so we need to make sure that all officers and every member of the department and even city staff understands that we're not going to change um policing in our city, um that that policing needs to happen, and we don't want crime to happen. We do have um citizens who are feeling hostage in their homes um as all of the as there is an uptick in violent acts that are happening here in our community. So how do we put everyone on notice internally about what the expectation is for policing and to hold them accountable when they are not um policing at the degree that we're expecting them to? Um, another one is I I, you know, I'm very excited to see um what you've described about the neighborhood um based policing model. I'm intrigued by that. Um, I know that when we um first started talking about community um police officers kind of on steroids and add more to community police officers, um Mayor Bliss, you know, this was something probably years ago, we started having those conversations more frequently. Um, we talked about the level of engagement that happens with those positions. And I I also believe that some of what we talked about too was really having all police officers to engage in such a way that people feel connected with the officers. So I kind of want to hear a little bit about how you're planning to deploy um the department to do this work 24/7. Um, I'm I'm, you know, I want to know what what that feels like. I know that there are a lot of um areas of town that feels over police and other areas that feel like they're not getting enough policing to happen. And so I'm I'm guessing that this model will correct some of that. So I want to hear a little bit about staffing as it relates to this new model that you're presenting, as well as a timeline for that. Um, recognizing that in the timeline that was presented at the end, um, the budget discussion isn't expected to happen until October. I don't know if you're not planning to make these changes until after October or if you're planning to make those changes immediately. So I'm a little interested in that. Um, and speaking of timeline and the budget, um, you've talked about bringing this plan to the community, and um I am an advocate for community engagement. The caution that I would provide for you is, as you're engaging the community, they have specifically talked about your budget and staffing of the the police department. So to go to them with the plan that we have in front of us today, it doesn't include either of those two things. So it doesn't include numbers of staffing and it doesn't include um the budgetary implications of the changes that you're um suggesting. So I would recommend that you have some idea of estimates so that it, as you're engaging the community, they can hear a more comprehensive plan so that they can weigh into to what they've been advocating for for a few months now. Um, the surveillance um component of your plan, I think I want to make sure that um you all are aware of the of the surveillance policy that we have in place. Um, I know that you are, but even from the public standpoint, that we do have a surveillance policy that we didn't there, there's a process that we would have to go through. Um, from my standpoint, based on what I'm reading, it seems like the drones are more nimble and and less invasive um and probably even more cost effective than ShotSpotter. So it would be good to kind of hear those in comparison, or are you considering doing both of those um um using both of those tools? And then um I am interested in in hearing more about, and and I think Commissioner Jones kind of spoke to this a little bit as he talked about GRCC and the program that they have. Like, I want to hear really specific tactics that will be used for um increasing the diversity that exists on the on the on the depart in the department. And um, you know, right now, it just speaks to wanting to do that. We've had a lot of goals and recommendations um in City Hall having that same goal. And so I want to, I want to see a little bit more specificity on how that's going to play out. Um, and then my last comments are um, and I won't have five closings like Commissioner Jones. Um, but my last co-comment are um under Innovation Strategies Three, it talked about non-sworn um personnel for the community assistance team. So I'm wondering, like, what's the background of persons who would um participate in that? And are they already existing employees that would be just redeployed to this work? Or would you need to hire for that? And then um lastly, um for the homeless outreach team, I know that that this is relatively new itself, and you're trying to increase something that is already new. Um, but it would be great to know kind of how many people are you thinking of to add to the existing team? And what are the outcomes that you're hoping to um garner from implementing um this team? And from at that point, I'll just, oh, thanks.
Yeah, thank you. We're adding one other personnel officer to the team. Uh, I believe that's going to be done in a week or so. Uh, at this point, we'll continue to evaluate, see how that team um what this needs are for the team. Uh, a real big component, though, I do believe, is that professional person that's not either a firefighter or a police officer to be embedded in it. As uh city manager mentioned, there's been discussions with that program, I really think that will take that program to the next level, and we will continue to evaluate. As far as the other teams that you talked about, we do not have the existing persons on staff now. Uh, we're just developing that and to see what that looks like. There are other models throughout the country where uh departments have those personnel that will respond to those type calls. So as we're developing this plan, we're also evaluating a lot of things in the plan to see what fits for Grand Rapids. It was asking me, this neighborhood policing, who did, what department did you study? And I, my comment was, well, no one really. I've listened to the community. I've listened to my elected officials. I've listened to my boss, the city manager. And this is a plan I just believe will work in Grand Rapids and make us more effective than what we're doing. And my hopes are that other departments will come here and look at what we're doing here. I believe in this plan. I will, it will make our policing strategies better and we're we're better interacting with the community. And and um, as I stated, um historically, we have policed the way we thought was effective. We have to listen to the community on how they want to be policed. And then we have to have those conversations on how better, best we can move forward. One of your comments that really strikes me, um, and I know is a concern, I want to go back. I think we wrote down many of them. If it's okay, if I'm missing one, that you said, I'll make sure we follow up with you. But the fear, you you bring up a good point. Some of these um young people are carrying guns because of fear. Uh, I believe evidence based uh strategies that we're looking to explore, whether it's pure violence or some other strategy, hopefully will impact that also. But um that is very real, what you're saying, and we do hear that, that kids are carrying guns out of fear. We have to break that cycle of that cycle where they have to feel that they have to be protect themselves by carrying an illegal firearm, because you're exactly right, the outcomes that come that 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 happens there is not desired by anyone. Uh, if it's okay, I think we wrote down many of your questions, and if I can follow up, or if you want to remind me of one or two that I may have missed.
Chief, let let me um uh lean in on one that may be more appropriate for for my office regarding the the budget um conversations. And so I want to um go back and reemphasize what we're what we're trying to do now is come up with a strategic plan, not the fiscal plan. And I know there have been many conversations about wanting to make budget decisions, but in in my um approach, the budget follows follows strategy. So once we determine the priorities, this is a, this is a um a very comprehensive um plan, multi-year plan, but it wants to chief um starts to determine what he can operationalize now. So like some of the, some of the things that he will be able to do around the policy reform, those will be done immediately. Those won't require additional fiscal changes. There are, there are other things that uh may require the reappropriation of personnel, uh reassignment of personnel. There are other things that uh may require the addition of civilian behavioral health professionals. And we know that that will only other response models, but we are not, we are starting specifically with the homeless outreach team. And so there is a budget um amendment or a budget item, I believe, that we are bringing forth for utilization of CARES funding for the rest of this year to do stuff in the short term uh that will mitigate the effect of COVID, for example. And that will um allow us to um expend resources to supplement uh some of the behavioral health professionals as well as a person for the homeless outreach effort. And so the the chief does not, is not prepared to make all of the um, I have all the conversations now around the financial uh issues. I'm not prepared to have those conversations at this point. We're still uh in planning mode on our strategic plan. So if you will, if you if you'll take it in phases, there's strategy formulation and there's strategy implementation. So we can continue, let's formulate what we want to accomplish in the outcome, and then when we get to that implementation phase, that's when the conversation really picks up heavy with the commission, then we prioritize exactly what will be done that will have the fiscal impact. Uh, and there may be other things beyond that that he can talk about in his in his current budget, but in terms of those big questions about uh decreasing the cost of police department, those those will not um um be things that we will be able to to talk about as matter of factly um over the next couple of weeks. So so I want to just be real, real, real clear on that. Uh, Chief, do you, uh, is there anything else you would like to to respond to at this moment regarding Commissioner Mayor's questions? I have some of the others down, but I wanted to defer to you.
Right. Um.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get back with you, Commissioner. Just the data testing, the data testing done on the dashboard. Um, but our, I'll visit with our uh Innovation Office and Performance Management Office. There was user testing internal. I don't know how much uh from a community perspective, but this will certainly be feedback. It's iterative, so we get additional feedback from community on how things could better look and feel. I'm sure the team will take that into consideration. Um, and then uh your your comments on surveillance makes sense. I appreciate uh the uh insight on recognizing that this is uh having the drones that's less invasive than the uh technology that would have to be embedded in each community on ShotSpotter. And I think the chief was correct on the GRCC um model right now. The, I think Chief Reifenberg uh hit the nail on the head around recruitment. Um, you know, we, 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 we have to decide on where we're headed first, because previously, the reason why we punched pause, why we pushed pause both was economically with the um with the economic recession. The other was all the discussions around uh reducing staffing levels in the police department. So uh until we can um firmly uh point where North is where we're headed, uh, a lot of those efforts around recruitment are on hold because there is no hiring that's going on currently, but we know that that's going to have to change in the future. But that, there's just only so many, we're juggling a lot of of issues now. And so we're, we're trying to to prioritize uh where the department can, need some best uh focuses efforts on those short term issues. And I think we'll come up with identifying those midterm issues and the long term issues for implementation. But I think other than that, Chief, why don't we just follow back up with Commissioner Lanier and Commissioner with some of those answers uh in writing?
Okay.
Thanks, City Manager, and thanks, Chief. I'm sure that um several of us will have some follow up questions or or additional feedback. So Commissioners, as you do and as you hear from community, if you want to share that with the chief um directly and and CC, our city manager, that would be appreciated. And then any additional information that the chief has to answer questions, I'll ask him to make sure that the full city commission is included on that correspondence so that we're all informed. Um, again, Chief, thank you. Thanks to the department. Appreciate your work. Um, appreciate, as so many of my colleagues said, your willingness to really lean into this moment to uh work hard to create a different future around public safety in our city. Uh, so just really appreciate all the work that's gone into this, and we'll look forward to additional feedback from the community as you go out and about and during your town hall. Um, all right, Commissioners, next I'll turn to our city manager for a brief update from Chris uh from the Office of Public Oversight and Accountability.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I do that, uh, I I neglected to acknowledge two very important movers and shakers in our organization that are working in the executive office. And I wanted to recognize Samantha Rodriguez Osorio, who is a student at the West Michigan Academy of Environmental Science, who is a Row 1000 intern in executive office, as well as Tyler Salat, Salat, Salatin, who is a student at Wells Springs Preparatory High School, is also a Row 1000 intern working in our executive office. And I think both of them have turned their cameras on, and I just wanted them to uh be acknowledged uh by the commission for uh their work and participation and just briefly say hello. All right. Well, well, fortunately, um, unfortunately, we're, we're out of time, but they have been doing an outstanding uh job in our office, and we appreciate the work that they're doing. Thank you so much.
City Manager, thanks for, thanks for recognizing both of them. I've had the opportunity to meet them and to see them at work here in the executive office, and we are so delighted to have you both. Uh, and I think it's a good time to also just acknowledge all of the other departments who have stepped up to hire young people as part of our Grow 1000 program. So it's great to have them both, and hopefully you'll get a chance to, uh, if not in person, meet our co, my colleagues, the Commissioners. Uh, hopefully virtually you'll be able to do that.
Well, they were wondering where we're, if we would get to them, because I think their shift ends at 1:00. So we did make it under the wire. Thank you so much for being here. So I'll go quickly to the next item. Uh, that is um an update from our Oversight and the Public Accountability Office. And um I I wanted to say a couple of things. We had committed with um providing uh some commitments on reports and strategy, and uh the Oversight Office will make those available online uh some uh sometime today. Uh, but we uh just, I wanted to give a brief highlight this morning. We intentionally wanted to uh make sure the the focus is on the police department. Next city commission meeting on the 25th, uh, we'll come back and we'll have more conversation about the Oversight Office strategic plan. So then, so both of those, I think, uh, were were canned and glove towards improving uh police outcomes. And then we can then, once we have those those plans and priorities, then we can have better conversations about the immediate short steps of what we're doing to move forward as a community and then some of those longer term issues. So uh with that, uh, I would um, I want to, first of all, appreciate uh the work of Mr. Davis and uh the outstanding work he's been doing since uh working in this office. And uh I am going to turn it over to him to give us a, just a brief update on what's available today and what will be happening in the upcoming week. And then um talk a little bit about what more of what we can expect on the 25th. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Manager, and good morning, everyone, or good afternoon now, everyone. As the manager indicated, uh, OP's draft strategic plan will be released today pursuant to our commitment. That plan uh is built around the four priority areas of change, accountability, restorative justice, empowerment, and engagement. And And it can be found on OPA's webpage, which is grandrapidsmi.gov/opa, or on our Facebook page, which is facebook.com/oversightgr. Also, really want to appreciate the Parks Department and them allowing Mr. Sawyer to assist us in the graphic design of this effort. He did an amazing job, and I'm very grateful. Next slide, please. On tomorrow, the Office of Equity and Engagement, along with OPA, will host a virtual community conversation regarding trauma associated with racism and use of force. This will be from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. We're very excited to have some community-based mental health experts who'll be a part of that conversation. And we recognize both OEE and OPA that we're not the experts in the area of mental health, but we know it's a need in our community to have these discussions. So it will be broadcasted live on OPA's Facebook page. Again, that's facebook.com/oversightgr. It'll be shared via the city's Facebook page, as well as Office of Equity and Engagement's Facebook page. It'll also be available on our YouTube channel, the city's YouTube channel, and broadcasted in Spanish as well. Next slide, please. So at the last Safe, Public Safety Committee, we talked about the True Action webpage, which is reimagining policing in GR. This webpage will launch officially today. I think it is already launched this morning. It's a digital hub that is used to increase transparency by providing easy access to information regarding the city's police reform efforts. So we recognize that different departments have been working on police reform efforts in the city, and the manager and police chief have already talked about that today. And we wanted to have a centralized location where the public can access that information. So if you go to the city's webpage and type in True Action in the search bar, this will come up, or it can be accessed through grandrapidsmi.gov/trueaction. Stakeholders will be able to review the budget, memorandums that have been released related to this topic, other presentations. They can get to the police website, as well as the new dashboard, and they can also provide feedback on those items through this page. Next slide, please. Finally, OPA's independent comprehensive report on studies and recommendations will be available today online, again, through OPA's webpage and Facebook page. Our Public Safety Ambassador program is embedded in that strategic plan, so an update related to that can be found there. As it relates to training, the Office of Equity and Engagement has released a request for proposals regarding additional training, including equity training and our community ally training that we've been talking about over the past several months. In addition to that, as it relates to OPA's draft strategic plan, on OPA's webpage, there is a mechanism for feedback to be left by community or internal stakeholders, and we look forward to receiving that as well. And then on August 25th, during committee at the whole, we'll be back to provide a comprehensive update related to these items. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Let me see if my, if any of the Commissioners have questions. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Davis? All right, seen none. I'll turn it back to our city manager to see if he has any final comments before we finish this meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your allowing us the opportunity to share an update on both police department's efforts, as well as OPA, and we look forward to the feedback from the community as the chief's plan continues to iterate, and as well as hearing the outcome of the Oversight Office's work. So thank you. Mayor, you're muted.
Thank you. Thank you, City Manager. I was just saying that I believe I speak for the full City Commission to just say thanks to you and your work in partnership with the chief to prepare the presentations today and update us on the work that's been done. So with that, we'll finish up this meeting. We'll be back together as a full body tonight at 7:00. We do have a number of items before us tonight, including three public hearings. So if you are watching and you want to speak to the public hearings or speak to any of our agenda items, that will be available tonight. We'll have five opportunities for public comment. And then also, Commissioners, those of you who are with me on Economic Development and Project Team, we do have that meeting today at 3:00. So I will plan to see those of you who are members of that team with me in just a couple hours. And with that, we will end this meeting. Thank you all.